Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's the appointed hour of 5:30. I would like to call this work session of Lexington City Council and Washington Lee University to order. Thank you all for being here. You will notice council members that are not on the dais have stated a conflict of interest and are not participating in this evening's discussion. That would be Mr. Ziegler, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Strong. Welcome, Ms. Strong. For those of you in the crowd who are Lexington residents, if you have not made an opportunity to sign petitions, there are candidates in the room that would love to get your signature so that they can have their name on the ballot in in the fall. And I think the due date on that is Tuesday, the coming up, if I'm not mistaken. Our purpose this evening is to have a discussion with our friends from Washington Lee. It's always good to meet with your neighbors and learn their plans and ambitions. And appreciate Washington Lee making time to come and walk us through their plans and ambitions, specifically the strategic plan from 2018 and things that are on the master plan, some of the other gyrations. But ask council members to give their undivided attention to the folks from Washington Lee. Have an open mind, an open heart, and open ears to hear and see what Washington Lee has to say. And then my ambition is that we'll have a conversation. There's no action to take tonight, but just to learn what Washington Lee is doing, ask questions, and have a better understanding of what will be forthcoming in the work plan from Washington, only the master plan, as it were. Any questions from members of council? Questions from staff or introductions or anything? No, very good. Steve, I'll turn it over to you. And again, welcome. Neighbor, congratulations on another graduate class, and I hope everyone's gainfully employed and independent.
I think they're well on their way. So I'm Steve McAllister. I'm the Vice President for Finance at Washington Lee. Do I need to give my address at this?
We know where to find you.
So I want to briefly go through the elements of the master plan that have been reviewed by the Planning Commission. Talk about how they fit within our campus environment, why we think they're projects that also fit within the city and the context of the city. So first, I want to thank you all for taking some time to do this session tonight. I know that all of you, or I believe all of you, attended at least one of the Planning Commission sessions, if not multiple of the Planning Commission session. So I know that you already have some context of the master plan that we put forward. I think you also probably realize that as we heard and listened through that process, that we made modifications in that plan and through the use of proffer statements, remove some elements from the plan, modified how we were approaching some of the elements with the plan. And so I hope that you feel like that was a good process that allowed for the input that's needed to evaluate and make decisions on this. Our process for this began in 2018 and was led by the firm of Sasaki Associates. And we brought them in primarily because we had just developed a new strategic plan. And in that strategic plan, there were a number of elements that talked about the pedagogy at the university, the integration of certain facilities to be able to support the students, the faculty and staff, and how they all work together. And so Sasaki was brought in to develop the campus master plan. They are, if not the premier, they are among the premier architectural firms that conduct this type of work, and actually have a worldwide portfolio of this type of work. So they're very, very qualified to think about these issues. They have developed a process for gathering information, assessing needs, understanding functions, and enter relationships to ensure that the work product is consistent with institutional goals, compatible with existing space usage, and complementary to the neighboring areas. Their work was coordinated through a master plan committee at the university and six subcommittees that represented perspectives on campus development across the university. They met regularly with these committees and held multiple open sessions to discuss findings, ideas, and concepts. In addition, a draft of the plan was presented to city council as well as the Planning Commission in 2020. Following those sessions, we actually did sort of put it on hold. We were in the midst of COVID. Our focus during that period was how do we run the university during the 2020-21 year so that we could bring students back to campus? We made the decision that we could restart and finish the process in this year and conducted meetings with city leadership on various aspects of the draft, as well as close closed loop with our Board of Trustees on adopting the plan and its concepts. As you know, last week, the Plan Commission completed its deliberations and documented their recommendations. That package with much greater detail, including citizen comments and the full master plan document, as I understand it, will be coming to you in the not-too-distant future to consider. Through the four sessions in which the Plan Commission met on the plan, as I mentioned, WNL made several modifications based on feedback and public input in the form of proffers. Is my hope that this reflects the university's willingness to listen, consider, and identify changes that address many of those concerns in practical and thoughtful ways yielding a plan that serves the city and the university well. So with that as background, let me briefly go through the projects that are identified in the master plan. I am happy to take questions as we move through these slides or simply move through them and take them at the end. It's really your preference. I'm open to however you want to.
I would say grab questions as we go along. And are you on a particular page of our handout or just getting ready?
I handed out is actually supplementary to this.
Okay, so pay attention on the screen.
The screen, although what I will say is within the document I had or the material that I handed out is our 2018 strategic plan. So so it's relatively short and good pictures in it, too. So I think if you go through that, you can see how the strategic plan and the campus master plan link together. And I'll try to raise that as we go through.
And I would just point out to members of the public, if you don't have or haven't obtained a copy of this strategic plan of 2018, you may have extra copies here tonight, or we can certainly get your information and provide it to you. So no, no, no secret document.
So let's see. Let me see if I So this slide simply shows the building sites or the buildings that are being impacted through the campus master plan. So those buildings are all in blue, and we'll be going through how each of these segments are discussed within the master plan. Sasaki Associates broke the plan into four distinct districts from a planning perspective. They are the WNL entrance, the academic core, the McLaughlin Street District, and the back campus area. So what I'll do is try to discuss the projects by district. The academic core, within the academic core, there are five projects contemplated, one of which has already been completed, the Heart Center, which was a project internal to Labor and Library. I would note that the university did go through all the appropriate processes for city approvals prior to the project beginning. I just want to be certain that there is not a sense of of development that was rogue by the university for this. So it was a one of the first projects that had been identified in the strategic planning process. We had a generous gift to fund it and support it. It is for, it is essentially a teaching and learning center at the university.
And it's part of the library?
Yes, yes, it is. Lower level?
Gotcha. Not, not in addition to the library, but just a reconfiguration of the existing building.
Within the existing building.
Thank you. Janie, is this a monitor out? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
This is the Science Center and Expansion and Renovation. This will likely be one of the latter projects that we take on out of the master plan. While internal to the core campus, this is the largest single project envisioned by far and likely the most complex in both the construction and logistics of operations as the project is phased. I would note, I think this is still as a new building. It is 30 years old at this time. And so it is overdue for, and probably done work in the building, but it is overdue now to both receive additional space, but to renovate the existing spaces.
And Steve, just to make sure I'm looking, the picture appears that there is an addition. Would you lose the where the development building?
We would lose the development building, and we would lose the, it's a little
Yep.
Annex building, how annexes, I think what it's called, and it's just a little cinder block, pan cinder block building.
Right.
Next to the Science Center.
Those, but the thoroughfare behind
Would remain.
Remain. Great. Thank you.
The William School Project. There are actually two projects related to the William School, a new building to be built on Washington Street in the areas where Baker and Davis dormitories currently sit. This is actually in the WNL entrance district, and then the renovation of Huntley Hall and Whole Camp Hall in the core of campus. So what we have here are on the left side is sort of how Huntley and Whole Camp will be configured. The right side shows a rendering of the new William School building that would be constructed on Washington Street. As noted, that would actually both Baker and Davis would be demolished and replaced by this structure.
Currently, there's a courtyard there, students.
A courtyard. This still has how much setback? 65 feet of setback from the road.
So it, the back of the building is going to be much like the dorm is now, where it's on the road.
The back road.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
This slide simply highlights some of the planning work that was envisioned as we considered a request to make a portion of Washington Street one way. We have removed that request from the master plan through our proffer, as is not a necessity for the plan changes contiguous to Washington Street to be functional and operate appropriately. In time, we may bring this concept back to the city for consideration, but it will follow more extensive traffic and parking pattern studies. We do believe that the concept could advance certain city objectives, especially in terms of bike and pedestrian access. Assuming that the change has modest impact on traffic flow through the area. So we are very cognizant of trying to make certain that if, if it were to become one way, that we've really assessed fully the impacts. Right?
Well, as this being discussion, from where I sit, it seems that the two-way is critical to city services and the citizens of Lexington. I understand the priorities for Washington and Lee, but especially if something happens on Nelson Street and that isn't functioning or able to use, that has been our alternate and provides a good thoroughfare to Route 60 and getting traffic in and around Lexington. So I can't, I I'll lay the challenge down. If you can help me understand why a one-way street would make more sense for Washington, welcome that. But at this juncture, I don't see it making a lot of sense. And the idea of biking, unless the city removes parking along Washington Street, there are really no biking lanes, but I like to think of Lexington, you share the road. You don't have to have a dedicated lane. You can ride your bike and people should be respectful of your pedaling and get where you need to be. Everyone's going slower speeds anyway, because things are already tight. And that's somewhat by design, because any accidents at 15 miles an hour are much better than at 35 or 40 miles an hour when we eliminate parking and make things one way. So.
And, you know, on the positive side, I say this knocking on wood, you know, to our knowledge, we do not know of any accidents with pedestrians or bikes on that, through that area of Washington Street. So I think it, even though sometimes one might question the safety, the actual fact of the matter is that we really have not had incidences there be concerned. Which is also one of the reasons why we became comfortable taking it out from the plan at this rate. Elrod Commons. Elrod Commons, this is a two-phase project with the first phase having been completed earlier this year. That phase dealt with the student affairs offices along with student activity spaces on the second and third floor of the building, also internal to the building, no, no external changes as a result of those projects. The next phase that we anticipate is the expansion of the marketplace to increase seating capacity and allow us to rework the survey and kitchen areas to better meet contemporary student dining models of today. Again, this is a building that's now over 15 years old. The kitchen has been worked hard. The survey has been worked hard. Frankly, we see more students coming to the marketplace for meals, and we see more upper-class students coming to the marketplace for meals. So we've seen seen higher demand on the facility, and we simply just need to expand it to allow for the student demand there.
And worth noting, that's open to the public as well.
It is. Except during the COVID period, that's one.
Nothing was open to anybody there. But, but noted for sure.
The Washington and we entrance district, again, I've already talked a little bit about the William School Project, but this is the Institutional History Museum that we had, we anticipate. This is within the WNL entrance district and certainly has been the project that has received the greatest level of scrutiny and concern in the recent sessions of the Planning Commission. Couple of things to note that I want to be certain that council is aware of. What you see on this slide and the next are purely blocking schemes to help determine how spaces may be laid out and whether there is adequate space to meet functional needs. This is not a design by any stretch. This is simply trying to figure out, could you cite a building there that could accommodate the function? At this time, the building has not undergone conceptual design that would help define the massing and exterior look and feel that will likely occur over the next couple of years. Second, as we corrected an error in the parking deck structure as part of the planning work, you will see that the structure has a section of exposed of the parking deck at street level for egress. So in this this diagram, it's the little white section.
On the south side?
Yes.
So that would be the
That would be a way in or out. We, what we want to explore is whether there could be a way to utilize Jefferson Street for one side and Lee Avenue on the other side. So wow, something to try to figure out.
Right.
There are two decks directly beneath the building, but are only beneath the building. They do not extend out beyond the building. Based on this, the actual number of cars that would likely be able to park in this is probably 75 to 80. And we believe that is still comfortable in terms of numbers to accommodate the Institutional History Museum visitors for the Admissions and Financial Aid Center, as well as some public parking as well. The admission and financial aid center. This building is envisioned to be constructed where the current early field, early fielding building is located. Beyond serving as the new admission financial aid offices for the university, the center would include greater meeting spaces to better serve the students, especially as it relates to curricular and co-curricular activities. The facility would connect to Evans Dining Hall, which will remain in place. As you know, our current admissions office sits next to BMI. I mean, and so it's we're almost next to BMI. It's, it's very much in the core of the campus. It is not a facility that has great parking access to it, although we have created some parking up there. It only houses admissions. It does not house financial aid. Financial aid is housed in one of the houses in the hollow to integrate those two offices where they, they, they work better together. And in fact, you can guide a student and a parent through the admissions process, the financial aid process in a seamless way, we think is important. Frankly, we have filled the current admissions house to the gills with staff, and it's the same in the financial aid house. And so it's really a case of needing greater space just to be able to accommodate the functions and actually upgrade the functions better.
Steve, can I ask you a question? If, if, if the admissions and financial aid center were built, but the parking was not available on Lee Street, if the garage wasn't there, how would you accommodate parking for that admissions and financial aid center?
It's one of the challenges we've got in front of us right now, because certainly the recommendation from Planning Commission is not to approve the Institutional History Museum, and we're not to recommend approval of the Institutional History Museum and the development of that parking deck. Obviously, we want, when someone comes to campus, a great visitor experience. And it is, it is in our mind, okay, how do we solve this if by chance there is not a parking deck there?
Well, I'm curious as to timing, if, assuming we were to agree to the parking deck on Lee Avenue and the Institutional History Museum, when would these projects be built? Which would go first, this one or the Institutional History Museum?
The parking deck would definitely be the first. And I think you could, you could have a system where either the museum could be built after on top of the deck, or you could, which it would likely be better to build the museum at the same time as, as the parking deck. Or you could go across the street and do the admissions building and then come back. It primarily is going to depend on when this fundraising that's, that will support both of these projects come in.
I mean, in a, in a, in a perfect world, like, are we talking in 10 years and five years? What, what, what is your thoughts on, on the timeline for something like that?
I think five years is
Okay.
Is probably where we would be.
Okay, because
You have to, we do have to do the William School Project first. That one is critical to making things happen. Frankly, we've got to keep early fielding for a period of time because of certain academic support functions that it provides.
Right.
So, so early fielding can't come down until Huntley and Whole Camp are done. Our plan or our hope is that we can begin the William School Project this summer. It's a two-year project, and then Huntley is another 18-month project. So that's three and a half years.
So parking for the William School, I'd like, how would you accommodate that?
It would be within the existing parking structures.
Okay, so you're not reliant on the lead.
No, no, in fact, this will not be employee parking. This will be visitors to the museum, visitors to the admission center and public parking.
Got it. I mean, just to say, just to give you a sense of where my head is at. You know, I've listened intently to the planning commission things, and I'm fairly comfortable with where things shook out. So I don't think from my perspective, it's going to change much from what the Planning Commission suggested. I have slightly different reasoning for some of those decisions, but it comes out the same way. So I just want to make sure that, you know, if the Lee, the Lee Avenue parking is not on the table, that the other projects are possible for you.
And what I would say is clearly what we heard from the Plan Commission was a challenge to, to answer a lot of questions relative to the parking deck and the Institutional History Museum.
Right.
We've got a lot of work to do there to be able to start to answer those questions. We want to answer those questions. We want to provide a good solution that works for the city, works for the university. So we haven't given up on those, but we, we understand the challenge in front of us.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Steve, my question would be, if the parking deck is not approved, then would the admissions and financial center, as well as the William School, have the ability to have a parking under those buildings, or have the designs gone too far?
I don't think either one, well, certainly the William School design would be such that how it's already envisioned. The only way you could get parking under would be to actually increase height. And you know, that, that section of Washington Street to the alley does fall off. So but we could not accommodate without raising. And frankly, it would be the same on the admissions building. And, and I'm not certain that we would have a good access point into the admissions building to try to figure out underground parking. Not to mention, we recognize, you know, every time you build the question of how much rock is out there. That, so there's no, there's no easy way to go down typically. It's one of the reasons why we like the Lee Avenue site, because it's already
Already a hole.
Exactly. It's our affectionate name for it.
Steve, the related question, the, when you vacate admissions and financial aid, what will happen with those facilities? What's the plan?
Yeah, I think those will be repurposed as primarily some sort of academic buildings or academic centers. So as you know, we're creating the Delaney Center. That currently does not have a central home, but I could see the Delaney Center as, as, as a, as a as a type of function that would, would, would fit nicely into that type of building.
To the Delaney Center in the Hotchkiss House.
Yes.
For instance. Okay.
Or the Shepherd Poverty Program, which, which frankly is, is maxed out in terms of how many spaces given their staff size and everything, they're maxed out relative to where they are.
Right. And as far as the location that your consultant, looking at Lee Avenue, you own the, the whole and the two buildings beside it.
Correct.
It is not part of the campus. It's just owned by Washington and Lee. It's not part of the, the master.
It is not part of the, the campus overlay district.
Step on up so that, we're recording this, so folks can
Campus architect. Actually, the Chavis House in Casa Espana are in the institution overlay.
They are in the institution overlay.
Just 12 Lee Avenue.
Just 12 Lee Avenue, it's not right now.
Gotcha. The hole.
The hole.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Because in, in looking at this and cogitating and visiting with a friend, he showed me an image of a, a building at the corner of Jefferson and Washington. Right now, there's a beautiful, welcome to Washington Lee brick wall with parking behind it. And there's a relatively good-sized hole for parking there. And it, it seems to me with that being an extension or relocation of artifacts in Lee or University Chapel that that could be a space that is also within the campus and could provide a beautiful setting and connectivity to the city. And it's not what your consultants recommended, but you have one leisurely block that is predominantly Washington Lee. The Episcopal Church certainly is an island amongst you, and I'm not sure if anyone here is from the church to, to here or has weighed in on the, the plans, but it seems like that's a huge space that is a bit of a hole that could provide a couple of levels of parking, a beautiful museum with classrooms overlooking the campus and/or the city. Just an idea.
Actually, this spring, we had a great discussion with, with the church leadership about the plans, and they wanted to understand it better. And so we met with them, talked through it. I think they were pleasantly surprised at I think they were 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 pleasantly surprised at how things could work with this. The parking could support the church on Sundays, to be quite frank. And I think they saw lots of ways that there could be overlap. With how we. Had it outlined at the time. I would say I think the challenge with what we call the Corral Parking Lot as a building site is is if you build there, you have to figure out how to build so that you don't lose that sightline up to the colonnade. And that's, that is the challenge. And and. I'm not certain that you could could put what you need to put there. Without without breaking that sightline.
Right. Even more dramatic when you get to the end of it and it opens up, but. Points taken.
Other questions? So this is the elevations of of the concept for the admissions financial aid center. The one thing I would say that that this does not do well, it does not. Show the setbacks well. So this this building essentially sets on the same. Not the the.
Same footprint or?
Same footprint as early building. And so there's a thirty-four-foot setback from Washington Street, which is very consistent with where early fielding is today. It is a taller building. But it's.
How much taller is it?
It is.
Okay. Another floor.
Yeah.
Perhaps, okay. And again, that's going to tie in with. Evans.
Correct.
Just as early feeling is currently.
And so the meeting spaces and Evans will be able to function. In a way that that has a very strong relationship.
Yeah, currently with the mailroom and classrooms are utilized in early fielding and some offices.
Yes, yes, there are some offices, the mailroom, the print room, print center. We just moved the executive committee, the student executive committee to the the new space and. Elrod Commons. We do have the offices for counseling services over in early fielding right now.
Very good.
So let's talk about the McLaughlin District, which has gotten a lot simpler. Essentially, there is one project that's being considered within this district. And. When we made the decision to pull the McLaughlin Street trapezoid out of the plan. So the project is the expansion of Wilson Hall. To increase practice room space that is currently lacking. Again. The the diagram here is a blocking plan. It is not a by any stretch, a final plan of of what what would be constructed there. And as we move forward with additional design, it is our goal to substantially increase the setback from the street than what is depicted in this drawing. So we have agreed to the twenty-five-foot setback with. The caveat that if we cannot meet that, that we would come back through conditional use permit to seek.
If I can comment on that, because I have to say the original. Master plan presentation, what you asked for, this was the most alarming part of it. And you guys pulled it out. So, you know, it was less less alarming, but. The issue with that particular road is it is a major thoroughfare for everybody who lives on that side of town. We all take that road. Five, six times a day, and the concept of something six feet from the road, turning that into a canyon. Was, you know, that that was alarming in the extreme. So I guess what I'm saying is when you come back. I don't think there's going to be much leeway on that twenty-five-foot variance. I I mean, I really think that. I I hope you will take into account that that is a major. Lexington thoroughfare, and it needs to remain that way. So.
Yeah, and and to be clear, our goal is to get that to that twenty-five feet. Whether that means that we we shift where the practice space may go. Within the context of the full Linfest Center and Wilson Hall. Buildings. That's not, that's an idea that we're we're looking at now. Whether we can get the setback with within the existing, there are challenges relative to frankly, getting daylight into to to a good portion of Wilson Hall at that point that we see as as not ideal from a design standpoint. But. Yes, we're very, we're very cognizant.
Okay.
And you you're thinking primarily for not pedestrian, but for vehicular traffic.
Vehicular traffic. I mean, it is already a very curvy road with limited visibility.
Sure.
And I do, I I really can envision a building. We would not allow that for anyone else. So I just don't see how we could allow it for Washington and Lee. I mean. Anyway, that's.
And well, and as you go through your design, anything that you can do to enhance, you know, if the road could be widened with. You know, for instance, more, I don't know, widen the road in some fashion by putting a sidewalk more.
Absolutely. And never say never. I mean, I I don't know what you might come back with, but you know, just to be aware that it's a major issue for everybody who lives on that side of town.
Is the back of that building not conducive for for adding on?
It is not. Does it go into the floodplain?
It it just touches the floodplain. Anything we would add to it would go into. Okay, stay away from that. On the backside of the building. Facing the creek or where all the art studios and our, we don't really want to take those windows away. It's very important for them.
While we're looking at this, can you explain to me? I I the planning commission's recommendation was to extend as a sort of housekeeping, the institutional overlay to an additional portion of. That particular lot, the. Correct?
If I understand things correctly, there was an issue about. This portion.
Being being right on the. Right, that that would be taken care of with the extending the institutional overlay. I'm just trying to figure out from this image, how far would that extension extend to? All the way to the yellow line or? Okay, and and does Washington Lee own property to the to the left of that yellow line?
Yes. Dash line here going up and around.
Yes.
We own that.
Working on land transfer.
I I I guess I kind of meant directly to the left on McLaughlin.
We do not.
Okay, you do not. Okay. Got it.
You you border. Wrench work or?
Rails.
Rails and.
Rails and, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's what you're talking about, right, Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay. Very good.
So moving to the back campus district.
But before you jump over there, I I know that you polled. The area that includes McLaughlin, Nelson, and I think Glasgow and all the homes. What's your plan for that area?
At the current time, it's to continue to utilize it as we have been utilizing it, which is its faculty staff housing. And primarily, it's been used with our assistant coaches. And in fact, typically, there's two to three assistant coaches that live in each of the houses. I will be the first to say. There needs to be investment in this block. There needs to be investment in those houses. So we've got to figure that out. And we've got. We've got to figure out what we want to accomplish. With that, what we call the trapezoid now. We used to call it as triangle.
Yes.
We've been corrected.
Always willing to learn.
That's right.
I I know there's somewhat. My perception, and I may be misinformed, but the what I'll call the yellow houses on the corner of of Glasgow and McLaughlin are somewhat historic, architecturally attractive, condition is poor at best. As a owner, I I hope that you will find a remedy much sooner than later that doesn't include demolition. The ambition for that to continue to be neighborhood. R1, I'm not, can't remember all of our exact zoning, but for that to be a residential area, whether it be for the coaches, for new faculty coming in. I could see that being terrific space and people being able to. Minimize their carbon footprint with walking to work and things of that nature strategically located. For faculty that may have small children with Waddell, a block or two away, and a great park along the way. Just has a tremendous amount of amenities, but certainly is arguably uninhabitable at this point.
Certainly the yellow houses.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you.
And and that, you know, our our goal was that what we had been envisioning in this block was going to lead to that investment. To protect those properties long term. With this, we're now having to sort of re-step and think through how we do that. In a different manner.
Gotcha.
So going to back campus, and and this will be fairly brief. Here is the softball complex. This is one you don't have to worry about from a city perspective because it sits in the county. But I want to make certain you're aware of of it from the full campus master plan. This would be the next sport that we would add, and it would be. To help increase the number of women who participate in athletics on the campus.
Steve, is that, help me out, that's the Captain Dick Smith baseball fields and just to the left of it, and then is that? The pavilion? Okay.
Yes, and that's the pavilion and then Dusche Swat Tennis Center is up.
Gotcha. The. The place where it's going right now is pretty much an open field and a little bit of the frisbee golf.
Correct.
Area, okay.
Correct.
And stay beyond that, out in the wooded area. Does W N L own the land all the way over to the river?
Yes. Housing sites for student housing. We have two potential housing sites that we may consider. One that is in the city, which is the A group of buildings. And one in the county, which is the B group. We currently have a working group that is examining the question of whether students would voluntarily want to live on campus as seniors if there were a good housing option. I want to emphasize that we do not envision a requirement for seniors, but these two options would allow us to build up to about two hundred beds for such such a purpose.
And help me understand where A is. Would anything be eliminated, or is that just raw land that's?
Raw land.
Mowing grass or trees are growing right now?
Yes. So the concept is similar to what is in the village in terms of the the apartment style.
The third year?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we anticipate a bridge, additional pedestrian bridge across Woods Creek to improve. Accessibility on the campus by providing a northern link across Wood Creek with termination points at the back of Labor and Library and the Law School. One of the key principles within the planning process was embracing Woods Creek as the most distinguishing natural feature on our campus. So any such development of this bridge will be extremely environmentally sensitive. We recognize that. We we know we. We can do it well, and we will do it well. But it does enhance considerably the accessibility between what we call back campus and core campus. And you could come into Labor and Library at the back, take the elevator up and and come on to Stemmons Plaza and and colonnade.
And that would be similar to the existing footbridge in concept. It would not be a covered.
Would not be a covered.
Closed.
No, no, would be actually relatively low through the area. Not, we hadn't considered a bridge in a prior master plan that was was much more grandiose, I would say. And and this one is much more trying to 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 preserve the look and feel within Woods Creek and and not be. As as overwhelming.
Right. And if I understood you correctly, it'll come into the the base of the back of the library.
Correct.
And then I'm trying to remember going across it, it it's going to hit the street as opposed to specific buildings.
It will will hit the street and then utilize this path of cutbacks to get up to the law school level.
Gotcha.
So that that it's handicap accessible.
Okay, so it'll it will terminate, but.
Yes.
Once you get across, okay.
Yes, as a, as a path.
Gotcha. Interesting.
So I think that's it that I have. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions or.
Sure.
I'm sure you you all have discussed, you know, the wooded area over to the to the river. I'd like to know what kind of. Reasons you may have for not expanding in that direction as well.
There's quite a bit of challenge from a geography standpoint. And as we understand it, and as our geologists have pointed out, number of sinkholes that we would have to contend with. To figure out how to develop. Getting services into that. Utilities, structures and utility services into that is certainly a expensive. Undertaking as well to do that. So I think it's it's been viewed as. It's a great natural feature of the campus and will be, would be difficult to develop if we wanted to. And so frankly, we just have have never looked. At it as as a strong development site.
Do you have trails or other things like that through there?
There are lots of trails through there, yes. Lots of trails. We've got the campus garden back there. We have what we call the Science Park, which is allocated to to. Some of the science faculty for habitat. Projects and so forth that they want to to explore and and do as part of their research.
Is the is the archaeology department going in that direction, or are they back over behind Liberty Hall?
They're focused across behind Liberty Hall, but also they clearly want to expand to to look to see beyond what has traditionally been viewed as this is the footprint within Liberty Hall and how Liberty Hall was was serviced at the time. To see whether there are other developments out there that frankly would would help to. Explain the history of the the area and how the land was used.
So you see it better used as more of a natural setting?
I think that's the case right now, yes.
Thank you.
Along those same lines, you acquired the Warner property, which has a home and barn and riding ring. Talk a little bit about what your plans are with that.
When we acquired that property, we acquired it as sort of the hundred-year purchase. There was no. Plan for how that would be developed. And in fact. Two-thirds of it cannot be developed. It's under a conservation easement. So so there are two parcels. On opposite sides of Route sixty and directly on Route sixty that could be developed. One is, I think, fifteen acres and the other is is five to six acres. But the vast majority of the property that was acquired there is under conservation easement. Ultimately, I could see us moving some of the science park. Over to that because I think it would be conducive to to the work of of the science faculty. And would allow them to look at some back campus areas for possible development over time, but. That's a work in pro- progress.
Does that have any desirability for student housing, like the fifteen acres that you're mentioning that they're along Route sixty?
I don't think so, because I think what we've, what we've gathered from students is. Is they want, if they're going to be on campus, they want to be in a place where they can actually navigate into campus relatively easily. And I think they. They would think of that as, why would I do that? I this is no different than. Than any other rental at that point.
Right.
We think, we would hope it would be nicer than a lot of rentals, but.
Right. Very good. The Boneyard, what's the, is that county or city? And what's the the objective there?
Boneyard, if I'm not mistaken, is county, is that? And the objective there is is just overflow parking. We we thought about other things that might occur over time, but but frankly, don't have any clear concrete ideas of. Of how that might. Change.
Gotcha.
Dennis, if we can talk about process for just a second, assuming. Making the assumption that we follow the planning commission's recommendations. The stuff that the the Institutional History Museum, Wilson Hall, those sorts of things. I I I'm curious how you might. Come back to those particular projects, and I I'd like to maybe have a discussion. To to give us a sense of how we would, we would receive these, those sorts of things. I mean, from my perspective. You know, our comprehensive plan says that we're to encourage you to stay within your existing institutional overlay. And I read that as, okay, let's. And I read that as, okay, let's give Washington Lee as much deference as possible when it comes to their institutional overlay. But to not expand the institutional overlay at all, that doesn't mean, obviously you can purchase and own property outside of your existing overlay. But you would be subject to the same, you know, zoning requirements as anybody else. And so from my perspective, things like the trapezoid, um, uh, you know, those sorts of things would remain outside of your institutional overlay. That, that is how we would, we would approach that. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't welcome you approaching us with an idea for something, but we would not a priori, put it in the institutional overlay. That just wouldn't happen. So I think the same issue is going to apply with the institutional history museum, which I personally think is a great idea. And it may be a great spot for it, I, you know, I, I, but regardless, even if we're to entertain that as a notion, we wouldn't start by saying, let's put it in the institutional overlay.
I, I think that would be, and it was frankly, I, I think that's what we heard from the planning commission is, is don't come back asking for this.
Right.
Expansion of the institutional overlay district. There are ways that we can come back through the conditional use permit or something like that. And, and it was clear from my perspective that, that, that there is a need for a lot more understanding of that project and, and what the project might look like, how, um, the parking would work, the access in, access out. Uh, and so we clearly recognize we've got to do more work on that. And, and when we've got something that we think is at least substantive enough to say, we'd like to get your, your feedback on whether you think this is, this is getting close to something that, that works or not, then I think we, we want to come back and have that discussion.
Okay.
Frankly, because we don't want to go into a lot of design expense only to have, have it come to, to the point where we're looking for approval and, and it's.
So I guess that's how we're encouraging you to stay within your institutional overlay existing because, you know, we're going to give you deference on that stuff. So it would be easier for you to plan. So, you know, there is a cost, uh, to, I guess, to extending beyond that. And, and that, that's my thought on this. And I mean, I, I can't tie the hands of future city councils, um, or planning commissions, but I, I mean, I, I would hope that future council members and the public would be adamant about not expanding the institutional overlay.
I, I would, uh, piggyback on that if I, um, I just want to reconfirm the two existing houses on Lee Avenue are in the institutional overlay. So that can work. The, the extension or, um, addition would be the hole. And are, you know, you can argue if that makes sense, given the project looking to do. I know, um, personally, and what some folks have shared, um, in the community is a concern of Washington Lee. Um, my friend Tim Golden used to always call it institutional creep, uh, by both the universities. And, you know, we, we don't have homes or businesses on North Main Street, uh, beyond, um, uh, the music store at this point. Um, V M I has swallowed that. Um, the black community and much of Diamond Hill, uh, in Green Hill has ceased to exist as they've grown. On one hand, congratulations. Thank you for being a healthy neighbor, uh, but at the same time, um, uh, those lines blurring, um, I can remember as a child, uh, on Washington Street, there being tourist homes and a neighborhood at the bottom of, uh, Washington Street. And so as the campuses expanded, again, terrific for Washington and Lee and a, a unbelievable, um, uh, gem in our community attracting from all over the globe. So very thankful to have a terrific, healthy, uh, neighbor, uh, but really sensitive to being a neighbor of Lexington, where that starts and stops and making sure Lexington doesn't cease to exist. It's the, the place that used to be where Washington Lee and V M I are now located adjacent to our hospital. Being.
First one to say, I mean, there, there's a clear symbiotic relationship between Washington Lee and the city. Uh, we benefit from a vibrant Lexington.
Right.
We know from our parents, we know from our students that they thoroughly view Lexington as an, as an asset and as an important part of their, their experience while they're here. So, you know, we have every reason to want to work to make certain that, what we do is compatible with what the city is trying to accomplish as well. So, you know, I, I, I don't see it as a, as, as a, uh, as a conflict as much as let's, let's work to figure out solutions that work for both parties.
Yeah.
Well, as much as, as you benefit from Lexington, Lexington benefits from you. But, and, and the, the problem is that once the lines are blurred, then they no longer exist. So you lose what was Lexington that you cherish so much. And then the city of Lexington would lose what it cherishes from W N L.
Red front is a distant memory, but was a great place that the cadets loved to, uh, wander down to visit to get rations, uh, when they were sneak down perhaps. Yes, back in the, probably seventies, sixties, seventies and eighties. So, um, all in the name of progress to be sure. But, um, yes, some of those, um, you know, we're grateful for folks like the Gottwalds who have, uh, reinvigorated what's now Taps and the Georgias, um, adding to the fabric of our community and certainly the coffers of our treasury. So we're very grateful for, um, all of that work. Uh, along those lines of, uh, complimentary, um, if you could talk a little bit about Washington Lee's decision to look at, um, a circumstance like Press Browns, um, I think you're utilizing the print shop. Um, you know, the courthouse was in disrepair, um, such that the county abandoned it, um, and ultimately sold it. Um, but if you could talk about that a little bit.
Our, our, what we followed, uh, in, in recent years, actually goes back, I guess now, twelve, thirteen years, uh, since we, uh, uh, did our initial lease on, on the, uh, to South Main was as we looked and saw ways that, uh, there could be investment in a, a structure that would, um, benefit that structure first and foremost. But also that then we could utilize in a way that served Washington Lee and frankly brought people into the downtown district, uh, that it, we viewed it as a, as a strong solution. They stay on the tax rolls. They get improvements. We're tenants, uh, so, uh, you know, to South Main, we, we probably have thirty to thirty-five, uh, individuals that, that, uh, our office there, uh, the old jail building, seven courthouse square, we have, uh, probably fifteen to eighteen people, uh, that are housed in that building. Uh, the, uh, current dance studio along with Hopkins House, which is the Connolly Entrepreneurship Center, there are four to five, uh, uh, faculty that, that spend significant time in there. Uh, we are leasing one fifteen Wes Nelson. Uh, we're going to, to move our I T S group into that building along with our mailroom, uh, and the I T S group we're moving because Davis is going to come down. They're currently housed in Davis. So we've got to solve for that. Uh, and, uh, uh, the mailroom ultimately, our hope is that early fielding will come down, uh, where the admissions financial aid. So.
Can, can I ask how many, how, how, how many staff are going to be in fifteen Wes Nelson? I, I mean, how many people will need parking basically? Because there is no parking basically for that, for, for that building. And I'm just curious where they're going to park.
Uh, there is, I would say capacity of about thirty people.
Okay.
In there, uh, the assumption and, you know, actually we, you know, the hole is actually a parking lot that we own. So we can, we can.
Have them there. Okay.
Yes, we could take that and currently it's been leased, uh, to, to, to other individuals. But we could, we could certainly utilize that as parking.
Got it. Thank you. Um, did you say twelve years, twelve, thirteen years?
Thirteen years. I'm trying to think how long I've been in two South Maine, but.
Um, time flies when you're having fun. That's, um, but shocking to think about. Um, you know, Washington Lee's done a great job with, um, events like Get Downtown and making sure freshmen come and tour the downtown and have that connectivity and, and don't get locked on campus. Um, campus, obviously Elrod Commons and, um, other facilities provide a lot of amenities and services. So, um, things like Get Downtown, uh, to encourage students, um, in, in my role as mayor. And when I have a chance to speak to students, I always encourage them to not just look at the architecture, but experience it, but according to the buildings. And I think it makes for a rich, um, circumstance. So, uh, grateful for the college's efforts. Uh, there are folks that are critical, uh, from a sales standpoint. Uh, the late, um, Al Carter was always disappointed in the bookstore's, uh, reach and replacement of things that he was selling. And, um, you know, tho- those are, um, perhaps topics for another day, but issues that are out there and ways that the university and the local businesses can continue to, uh, leverage off one another and, um, prosper would certainly be the, the ultimate goal. Um, would be remiss if I didn't, um, uh, remind you that we, um, uh, in order to be a good neighbor and support the operations of Washington and Lee, um, it comes with capital expenses. And if you saw the news gazette yesterday, we, uh, invite you and all members of the public, uh, to join us in, um, contributions for our new fire truck, ladder truck, which will, um, serve the city well. We hope that we never have to spray on anyone or make use of it, but, um, need to have it. And it is an incredible savings, uh, for your property insurance as well as other businesses and, uh, landowners in town. A lot of times that's forgotten or just not understood, but I think it's in, important to understand that. I'm looking to see, uh, other questions that I had in addition to my, uh, editorializing. Um, when you look at, um, your campus currently, where do you see growth taking place?
How, how do you, how are you defining growth?
Um, it, it, expansion, I, I mean, it, my mind is still having a hard time wrapping around the elimination of the dormitories and putting up an academic building. Um, I, I.
Well, I, I think one, those two dormitories have not been active as dormitories for several years.
Okay.
Uh, when we, uh, did the renovations to Gaines Hall and Graham Lee's, we were able to move all our first year students into, to those two facilities, which emptied Davis and Baker. Baker was used for quarantine space, uh, during COVID. Uh, and, uh, Davis became the, the current I T S, uh, group along with Student Health Center, actually had always been, had Student Health Center in there as well. Uh, so we've got to solve as, as those elements, if those elements come down, uh, I think from a housing standpoint, it's going to be solutions like we showed here, is figuring out where you can, can, can come up with a solution in that campus.
Right.
That works. Uh, but at the same time, we are anticipating a lot of growth in the student body that, you know, we, with, it does occur. Don't get me wrong. I mean, we're a larger institution than we were fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, thirty years ago. But, but it, it is very modest.
Right.
Growth that occurs within the student body year over year.
That, that's why part of my mind is, is blown, knowing the university has not doubled or tripled in size. But the number of facilities and buildings, uh, that Washington Lee has built is, is mind boggling. And, um, and with these, uh, plans that you have and you, uh, some of them are replacements, some of them are expansion, but, um, all, um, uh, I feel like I have a much better understanding. And so if, if there's more building projects, this.
I, I, I think the challenge or at least how we see it and, and what we face is, uh, being a high quality and frankly wanting to continue to be the highest quality, uh, small liberal arts and law school type institution. It is, there are two things that are required for that. It's, it's human resources and it's, uh, facilities. And, and as things get more specialized, it changes what your facility needs are. And increase, you know, there, there aren't the, where does it cut back?
Yep. So much like the, the house my wife and I recently bought that was built in nineteen twenty-two and has one outlet on the second floor. We live in a different time, so there are different requirements for these buildings and what's necessary. So, members of council have additional questions?
I have one. Um, if you could tell us about whether the house that's called the Chavis House has any historical significance or was it just a house that you put the name on?
It does not have significance relative to.
John Chavis.
John Chavis.
Okay.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. At one, I, I want to thank you, Steve, for coming to, to, to present this. It was very helpful. And I really appreciate you, you coming to speak with us and, and having a dialogue about this, this stuff. So thank you.
Well, you had to suffer through me because Tom Kolaskey is on, on vacation for two weeks. So, uh,
Strategically timed.
He, he, he is a better presenter. I will tell you that.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Uh, I also want to express, uh, my appreciation. You have some Jim?
Just wanted to ask Mr. Mayor if there's any benefit in having Arnie Glazer give a little more, uh, information on process or are we okay? From the standpoint of understanding what the processes are that council now will be undertaking.
Yeah, um, I would say we're probably okay. Again, this was simp- where our processes in play, planning commission. Um, I, I, in talking with council members and other members of the public, felt it was important that we have a discussion. You know, what, what are our neighbors doing and why are they doing it? We don't have to like what you're doing, but we need to understand it. And certainly it needs to conform with the, the rules and regs, uh, of our city and policies. So, um, greatly appreciate you taking the time to educate us all and walk us through the plans. They've evolved significantly over the past six months. It was a much broader scope and it's narrowed, um, as, as you've indicated. Um, I'm hopeful that as, uh, you know, future councils and mayors work through, um, the master plan and institutional overlay, um, we all understand, you know, it, it is a process. And, um, being able to sit down and have a conversation like this is, uh, is paramount to, uh, having, making meaningful progress.
And these only come around once every ten or fifteen years. Uh, it's not as though, uh, uh, as a council, you would have a lot of experience, uh, with it. Frankly, as a university, it's always seems to be a new experience when we take one on, uh, so, uh.
It's predominantly new faces in front of you. I think there's, uh, one face that was here before, so.
Steve, I would say, you, you, as you said, this only happens every decade or so. But I think one of the issues that the public had and the planning commission stated and, and I had is that there was, you know, it's everything but the kitchen sink. And I mean, there was a lot to go through. There were a lot of individual components. And, and so if you, if, when, if and when you guys come back, it would be really helpful if it was one thing. If it was the institutional history, you, you, you know what I mean? I mean, rather than a giant smorgasbord of thing. And I understand.
Understand that, uh, at the same time, I think the goal, what we're trying to accomplish with the master plan is to be able to be as transparent as possible about what we see as the development of the campus over the next ten to twenty years and try to put those things in there so that frankly, when they do come, they don't come as surprises. Um, now, having said that, you know, it can be a new council at the time that you actually come for site plan review or, um, if you, if we were to need a, a conditional use permit. You know, things do get forgotten. I, 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 I did realize that. But, uh, uh, the goal is to try to put it on the table so that you do have a sense. And, uh, like I say, we, we don't want surprises. Uh, you don't want surprises. Uh, and so, uh.
Uh, just the pleasant surprise of the, um, benefactor that says, I'm going to write you a big fat check. And then they can advance the, the softball field a little bit quicker, something of that nature. So, um, the, um, uh, you know, going through this process, um, every ten years or so, it does make it precarious with new staff, uh, new folks. So again, I appreciate the patience and the, the learning curve of all working together, uh, to come out with the best possible scenario for our community. And certainly there was not an opportunity for public input tonight, but would invite members of the community to reach out to council members or myself or staff to talk about questions or concerns or, um, questions that maybe we didn't ask that we should. Um, occasionally, um, I, I don't think we've ever done it with Washington Lee, but V M I has hosted a few tours to say, come walk with us and see what this feels like, not, uh, beginning council to, um, or, or Washington Lee to, um, additional meetings or, um, uh, walking around. The back campus trails are pretty neat, um, you know, if you're interested. Um, but, uh, sometimes. But sometimes getting your boots on the ground and and like, for instance, talking about the visualization and and seeing the colonnade, how critical that may be from that spot. I know when Cornerstone Bank was being built, there was a great deal of consternation about the view of Lexington Presbyterian Church, and people may not be able to find the church because that building was going to be there. Sometimes it doesn't always work out that way. So those considerations and touring a little bit in our spare time or certainly going through and seeing some of the renovations at Elrod Commons, et cetera, may be a a field trip that we we may want to consider in the future.
We certainly will will would be glad to host and would be glad to come up with sort of something that is compact enough that can be doable, but also meaningful in terms of of making certain you you have a good feel for what we're thinking about and the campus.
Yeah. Um, one other thing pops into my head with two South Main Street, the the back portion of that COVID, of course, rocked everyone's world, but there was a room that was dedicated to be utilized as a community room.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if protocols are such that that's open again.
It is.
And what's the best way if you know, HLF or RARO or somebody wants to meet there?
Contact Lori Oliver.
Lori Oliver. Terrific.
Where is that?
Um, it's in the courthouse. There's that back room that was the community room that Washington Lee dedicated.
Was the old records room, I think, wasn't it? When it was the courthouse.
Um, I didn't spend enough time in the courthouse to know, thankfully. Um, with that, uh, thank you again.
Thank you.
Let that be the last word.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Have a great evening and we will stand adjourned until our seven o'clock kickoff for our regular meeting. Thank you. Janie, will you continue the the run? Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic, to the same one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Thank you all very much. Uh, next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda. And that was in your packets. I would request an addition under proclamations of 4.2 for a Jackson proclamation. And unless there are any objections, we will approve the agenda with that addition. It stands approved. I'd like to move into proclamations and I would invite Jerry Nae to join me at the podium for the presentation. I'm sorry. Yes, yes. For the welcoming refugees from the Russian Ukraine war. Step right up there, young fellow. Thank you for being with us and thank you for the work that you've done to organize the group that includes the city manager and myself specifically towards welcoming folks from the Ukraine who are displaced. I'd like to offer for council's consideration, the following resolution. Whereas the city of Lexington is a diverse and loving community welcoming to all and has a history of supporting refugees. And whereas Ukraine was unjustly invaded by the Russian Federation in February of 2022. And whereas the Russian Federation continues to commit war crimes against Ukrainian civilians, including executions, looting and rape and deliberately assaults Ukrainian civilians' infrastructure, including hospitals, schools and train stations. And whereas the United Nations estimates nearly 20% of the Ukrainian population, roughly 7.7 million people have been internally displaced. And whereas the United Nations International Children's Emergency Fund estimates over half of all Ukrainian children have been forced to leave their homes and cover over a quarter and over a quarter have left the country. And whereas the war is already the largest refugee crisis since World War Two, with the United Nations High Commission for Human Rights estimating that over 5.3 million refugees have left the country. And whereas in solidarity with the European Union, who has opened its borders to all Ukrainian refugees, the United States of America has opened its borders to 100,000 sponsored refugees. And whereas over 90% of these refugees are women and children. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lexington, Virginia as follows. The city council praises and celebrates the efforts of citizens in Lexington, Buna Vista and Rockbridge County to support the victims of the humanitarian disaster in Ukraine, both in the United States and abroad. And the city council offers its strong support and encouragement for private efforts in coordination with the Church World Service and the United States, the United States State Department's Bureau for Population, Refugees and Migration to relocate, house and support refugee Ukrainian families in the local area. And Jerry, I will ask council to consider this in just a moment, but want to present that to you and ask you to make a few comments.
I will. I'd like to hand that to Patrick.
I'm Jerry Nae from Lexington, I'm for six Jackson, avid of God's country. And I I do want to thank the mayor and the city council for that resolution that was just read and the gentleman I just handed the resolution to, Patrick Ramy is the author who drafted the first draft of that resolution. Um, I I do represent a group of citizens in in the Lexington, Rockbridge area, Buna Vista as well that has formed a group that we call hosting Ukrainian families. And that wording is very important, hosting Ukrainian families. We are going to get Ukrainians here and we will host them, treat them certainly as equals. The the citizen effort is very important that we recognize as as a citizen effort. When in 2015, this council, thanks to Patrick, passed a resolution to receive refugees at that time. And we did receive Congolese refugees and that went beautifully. And today that our mailing list for that effort is 200 strong. And among those 200 are numerous representations of faiths from Buddhists to Christians to Muslims and and so on. It's just a wonderful representation. And to date, this organization and we've had its very soft start. We haven't even given the information to the newspapers. I am hopeful that after this meeting that will happen. But so far with the soft start, everyone I've asked to help from a doctor to a lawyer to people with very special expertise that would contribute to the proper hosting of these families with everyone, 100% of the people that I approached saying yes, wholeheartedly. This this is not a church project. It is a community project. And that's the way the other one effort worked. Even though our the Episcopal churches agreed to receive contributions of money, that way it it gets proper handling in 501(c)(3) status. And we have just received the the use of warehouse space for the all the furniture. I've had lots of donations of furniture for for the refugees and the two how to two houses in the county that Philip Clayton donated and and at no charge, no utility charge. And one just yesterday from Charles Barker, who also who donated the warehouse space for the all the items plus a house that's closer to the city. So we're off and running. We're we're looking forward to getting at least two families here. And I would suggest that probably the families that come will be will be without a husband. Because those husbands will be still fighting the war in the Ukraine. We will be among those people that we've gotten that have special expertise. We have teachers that will be working with the school superintendents. That happened before and it's amazing how the schools turned to on this at that project. And the when the Congolese children entered the schools as the Ukrainian children will will do, they they were received as heroes. So it was just a a wonderful project. And in this project, we will establish a mailing list. Anybody that wants to get on that mailing list or get information on how to contribute, all they need to do is is email me. May I tell everybody my email address? It's Jerry Nae at Jerry Nae dot U S. So just let me know if you can help or would like to know more information. And I do again, thank you all for passing this resolution. This is the our start. This is really very, very important that we have your support and we're going to support the Ukrainians the best we can. Thank you.
Jerry, thank you for being here and leading the charge on this and we wish you best of luck and high energy and great results with the the folks coming.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd ask council for their consideration of this issue.
Make a motion that we pass the resolution welcoming refugees from the Russian Ukrainian war as presented.
Second.
Have a motion as second A discussion. Roll call vote. You've already voted. Mr. Smith. Mr. Ziegler.
Hi.
Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Uh, motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much and best best wishes. And we invite you to stay the remainder of our meeting, but if you would like to go on with the rest of your evening, we certainly understand. Uh, next I'd like to invite Denny Jarvis and perhaps Mallory Douglas to join and a proclamation recognizing June 6, 2022 as Harriet Hetty Jackson Day. Whereas the health and safety of all citizens are important to our great community. And whereas Ms. Henrietta Hetty Jackson was a resident of Lexington, Virginia for several years before 1865, when she was freed from institutional prison of slavery by the General Emancipation Order of the United States. Prior to 1865, Ms. Jackson and her family were enslaved in North Carolina and Virginia by the families of Revolutionary War generals Joseph Graham, Presbyterian Reverend Robert Hall Morrison and Confederate States of America general Thomas J. Jackson. And whereas upon emancipation in 1865, Ms. Jackson moved to Lincoln County, North Carolina, where she farmed and raised her family, living as a free American until her death on June 6, 1911. And whereas we are now beginning to understand and recognize the intelligence, determination and hope exhibited by many American women and men after 1865. Ms. Harriet Hetty Jackson serves as a compelling example for all citizens of the city of Lexington, the state of Virginia and the United States of America. Now, therefore, as mayor of the great city of Lexington and the Commonwealth of Virginia, I do hereby proclaim June 6, 2022, as a day of the highest honor for and in remembrance of Ms. Harriet Hetty Jackson adopted the second day of June 2022. So thank you both for your efforts and tenacity to bring this forward and the recognition of Ms. Jackson and the life that she lived.
Good afternoon, everyone. Evening, rather. This is a really unique opportunity because I really feel like our ancestors sort of speak through us in different ways. I own a commercial cleaning business, so this was something this woman did with no pay ever. And now I'm able to go through life and negotiate and be able to do really fantastic things with my own power and determination. And so it gives me a sense of pride today to be able to recognize Ms. Jackson. She was not only important, but she is a staple of what black women and women in general in Lexington stand for and what they're going to accomplish. I come from a pretty strong line of women. And so for me, it just meant everything to be here as a symbol of what history going forward and being progressive looks like. Thank you all so much for today. I really appreciate it.
I'm Danny Jarvis and resident of Lexington. Thank you for understanding and hopefully agreeing with the the resolution that will come before you.
I do want to add that when Denny contacted me about Harriet Hetty Jackson. I realized with the information that I received that she was born into a life of enslavement right here in Lexington. And in reviewing her history, she didn't really have that type of history that raised eyebrows. She didn't have the Underground Railroad. She didn't do those kinds of things that were on paper in our history. But I realized that Hetty Jackson represents hundreds of people who were enslaved right here in Lexington, who did survive that horrible institution. And she represents each of those who lived through it right here in our footprints. And for that, she does deserve to be honored in representing all of those people.
So thank you, Ms. Alexander. A good day when we can look at our past and learn from it. And thankful again for the folks that have brought this forward for us to reflect upon and share. Eric Wilson, of course, comes on occasion to give us a moment in history and we have a bonus with this opportunity with Hetty Jackson. So again, thank you all. Next item on the agenda is a presentation of plans and actions of the Lexington Police Department and like to call on Chief Green. Welcome, chief. And for council and the members of the public's benefit, this is merely a presentation. We're not looking to approve anything. But just get educated on in light of the tragedies that we've seen around our country in the past month and and beyond. What our Lexington Police Department is doing and getting us educated to understand.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, City Council member, City Manager. As the mayor said, I just want to update everybody so that you're assured that the police department is taking all precautions to safeguard our community, our schools, our staff members and our residents with the most up to date and modern procedures for preventing and responding to active shooter incidents. So with that, I just wanted to put up in case anybody wasn't aware, the definition recently, the Department of Justice with the FBI and Alert, which is the new program that we're moving to, put out a report on active shooter incidents just this March, March 2022. So as we move forward, I do want to put this up here, the statistics that they published just this past March. What we're showing is I think none of us are alarmed to this, but we know that active shooter incidents are increasing. They're becoming more frequent and deadlier. So this statistics is just through 2021, so it does not include Uval that happened just this past May, only a couple of days ago, that had 19 children shot, two adults. It is the second deadliest elementary school shooting. This does not show Sandy Hook Elementary School that happened in 2012, where there were 20 children shot and six adults. But what is alarming in a short time of 2017 to 2021, just four years, that we went up just four years, that we went up in active shooter incidents, 90, almost 97% from 2017 to 2021, and in just one year, from 2020 to 2021, over half increased in active shooters. So again, part of my job is to make sure when I came here that we are doing the best that we can in protecting our children and our residents. So part of when I came here and spoke to the city manager reviewing the police department's policies and procedures is to figure out how we can best strengthen our policies and our training. With that, the city manager was amenable to us paying for our law firm called Vega Law Firm to revamp all of our policies to bring it up to national standards out of our asset forfeiture funds. So that's in a process. But in my review of our policies, one of the things that I noticed is that our response to active shooter was antiquated. And it was not up to my standards. So immediately, I already advised my staff that we're going to start training the officers that when an incident happens, we do not wait. First person on scene immediately goes to the threat, does not wait. We're getting training in the alert response, which is again, the most up to date. And I will talk about that as we go through this briefly. This is something that is now the modern way of doing things. It's still trickling through to localities. But when I was in Portsmouth in the seven cities of Hampton Road, Chesapeake was the first one to do this unified response with police and fire. We've learned our lessons through the years of active shooter that a lot of times fire departments, because they go through their normal procedures of waiting until the scene is safe, which means the threat has been eliminated, no more threat. Now you can come in and start doing medical triage. During that time, people were dying. People were bleeding out. So Alert created the unified response where now there is going to be a casualty collection point. That means that the threat may not be eliminated. The officers will have the individual, the suspect, say at this corner over there, but we know he's not getting out. There is no way he's getting out. So then we create a warm zone where we have officers come in and escort EMS, protect them, which is kind of what you can see here, the bags that are being carried. Those are medical personnel. People in front, people in back are the police that are protecting them. We bring all injured people to what we call a warm zone, a casualty collection point. We start triaging and we start immediately transporting them out to the hospitals to save lives. So this is something, this is a total revamp that has not been done before, that we have to retrain our officers and train with fire and EMS. Again, this is something I noticed when I first got here, tasked my team that this summer, when schools are out, we want to utilize the schools to have as realistic training as possible, know the layout, know what we'll do, and run through those scenarios. So before Uval even happened, we already had training, and I'll show you the timeline, training already planned for this month in June and July for the officers to go into the schools. So what has already happened is our entire department has already been trained on first person on scene, first person goes in. We've already trained on entry with solo officers, two officers, and three officers going in. In June, we've already coordinated that we're going into the schools and we are going to put this practice into play with training. We are going to have VMI. We've talked to VMI already because they're the closest. They'll be there responding probably just as soon as we are. They are going to the alert program as well. So they're going to do their own training in June. We are going to observe in June. They're going to observe us in June as we go through phase one of retraining the entire department. Fire will be there in EMS because we're going to go through a refresher of medical trauma. Because once again, the threat is eliminated, even though EMS is on scene, every officer that is on scene will know how to pack wounds and start rendering critical trauma aid to any victims that may be there. Again, the preservation of life will jump into play. Dispatch is going to be something else that we have to do. They're not going to. This is something that's new to them. We're going to have to train them on the radio, on the responses and things that immediately they have to start doing without us telling them to do because we're focusing on neutralizing the threat and then saving lives. So we're working with them to get a policy in place. And then on in June, they'll just be observing and listening. In July, we ramp it up and we bring in fire and EMS. And now we bring in VMI and they will go through the exercise with us. And we will train with fire and EMS on going in on a unified response. Dispatch will go live and be part of that training. And again, we'll do another refresher of medical trauma as we're actually applying this pressure and this training to actors that we'll have in the schools. Then through this, in June, we're also talking to school staff and administrator to let them know what we plan on doing, where we're going, what the roles and expectations we expect of the teachers and staff had a better safeguard to schools before it happens, if it happens, and what we expect of them during and after an incident. Then at by the end of the summer, before the teachers come back, we want to be able to talk to the teachers that again, update them on what we're doing, how we will proceed and enter the school, what we expect them to do. And then we'll go through the coordination of our surrounding law enforcement agencies. Because whether they go to alert or not is not our concern, but we know they'll be coming to us, so they need to know what our procedures are and what their roles and expectations are when they come to assist us. Are there any questions on that so far? I know I'm kind of rambling through. Yes, ma'am.
Not rambling at all. It's very well thought out. When you talk about our schools, clearly Waddell and Luburn Downing are Lexington City schools, but we have two other schools in our community that are county schools. Is the plan for all four to go through this? And if so, what is the connectivity and role of the Sheriff's Department?
So that is our plan, but like I said, we have to get us, our department on what we're doing and solidified with our foundation. And then we are going to let them know, like I said, we're coordinated. We're going to tell them what we're doing, what we're planning on doing. And hopefully, they will want to go along with the alert program. If not, then they'll at least know if we respond to their school. This is how our response will be and they'll know our roles and expectations.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome. So moving forward, like I said, this is a large undertaking. It's a large task to retrain the entire department as well as other surrounding law enforcement agencies, our secondary schools. We'll go into VMI and W and L to make sure that we train. But more importantly, it's training annually. We have to make sure we train the officers annually, our partners annually on this. It has to be something that becomes second nature to us, but also keeping in contact with the schools, not just training us, but every year before schools would go back into session, again, talking to the teachers, refreshing what we expect. There's going to be new teachers, new staff members. Everybody needs to be on the same page. So we'll keep in constant coordination and making sure that there is transparent communication as we continue to go through this. What I also wanted to bring up is to revisit again, the advantages of a school resource officer. Nobody's saying that school resource officer is going to be the one that stops an active shooter or it won't happen because we have a school resource officer. But again, everything that we do is looking at best practices and planning. But prevention, prevention will be the key. We know that there may be a stigma that with school resource officers, it started back in 1999. Once Columbine High School happened, the knee jerk reaction from the federal government was throw armed police officers in the school, protect our children. But they didn't think that these armed police officers went into these schools without any additional training. Officers are trained to detect crimes, investigate. If a crime occurred, you make an arrest. There was no additional training for these officers. So then a few years later, the school to prison pipeline came out, report in about 2015, that showed that minorities were disproportionately being affected and arrested in the schools. We've learned lessons from that and realized that we have to put our officers in the schools. First of all, it has to be a unique fit. There needs to be a memorandum of understanding with the schools. Schools need to be a part of who you pick as a school resource officer. They have to fit into the community. And then we have to do our part to train them with basic school resource officer training, but knowing that's not enough. Basic SRO school is only 40 hours. Part of that 40 hours, only six hours deals with juveniles. So on top of that, we have to make sure we give them extra training for mental health to be able to identify issues, to connect children or their family members with the appropriate resources. And then we have implicit bias training to make sure that we minimize any disproportionate arrests of minority children. And then teen brain training, which actually shows it makes the officers understand that juveniles are still in their formative years and that their brains are still developing. And a lot of what they do in this behavior is not criminal intentions. And it could just be a warning sign for us again, to be a mentor, a coach, and a guidance counselor rather than authoritative figure. But more importantly, with having the SROs in schools with active shooter, they are the intelligence gatherers. They are the ones that see and know everything. Having an officer in school builds the trust with the students, the teachers and the staff makes them more readily available. That if a teacher, staff, or even a student thinks something's funny, they're more apt to go talk to that officer the next day when they're in school. Whereas most times, teacher, staff, or children are not going to call 911 to just talk about maybe a tip or something they seen in a bathroom or drawing that they seen or text somebody sent. But you're approachable and many times SROs are able to thwart incidents or traumatic incidents from happening in schools because of tips and information that they're given just from being there and creating a trust relationship with the students and staff members. But more importantly, the benefits again, through SROs and the salaries that now there are grants available that they will pay 75% of an SRO salary for at least three years with the locality only being responsible for 25%. But then there's a caveat to the 25%. You could actually be eligible for a waiver where the federal grant will pick up that 25% and pay 100%. And then there's an option of the DCJS state grant taking on that 25%. And every year that these grants, federal and state grants are available, you can renew it. And since 1999 Columbine shooting, monies, millions of dollars have been funded through the cops, federal grants, and DCJS to fund for SROs. So usually, once you're approved one time for an SRO grant, it's continually being paid for. You just reapply. So these are the benefits as to the salaries and benefits of having SROs on top of just trying to make sure we look at all angles to safeguard our communities. And that ends my presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here and a lot going on, to be sure. Members of council have questions for the chief.
I have one. When you were talking about the people, well, the agencies that would participate, I don't think you mentioned Washington and Lee. Is that because they're not certified officers or are they?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I did. I thought I said VMI and Washington and Lee. We're going to on the previous one, it says our secondary schools. We're definitely doing VMI and Washington and Lee. They're not going to be left out at all. And their public safety has to be aware, even though they're not police officers, they have to be aware of our response. And again, we have expectations and roles for them as well as teachers and staff members that we need them to adhere to and train with us.
So their security will be involved.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Green, one question, and you may have already said this, but I'm not sure. Assuming there were no grants and then the city were to pay for it, what can you give us an estimate of what a school resource officer would cost annually?
So I actually have the figures from Ms. Jennifer Bell when we were doing our research. Obviously, for an officer, their salary the first year would be about $42,000 if we were to have no funding at all and just sustain it on our own. When you look at adding insurance and all the health and employee benefits, it would come up to about $59,726. So if, and if we break it down even further, the first year of the grant, if we were awarded the grant, we would be responsible for $14,931. That would be the max, the 25%. But like I said, there's options to have that waived as well as DCJS state grant taking up that it could potentially be 100% covered.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
One question, one point of clarification. You mentioned that a SRO within their 40 hour week work week, you made some reference that only six hours a week are spent with juveniles. And I just wanted to, I guess that's a statistic because I would be wondering how many times the police were called to Waddell Elementary School or LDMS to deal with a juvenile issue this past year or even in the last 10 years where the police were called for a legal issue involving a third grader or second grader or a sixth grader?
So I wasn't clear on that. I'm sorry if that was misunderstood. The 40 hours is 40 hours of basic SRO training. So that's 40 hours of training for basic school resource officer. And six hours of that 40 hour training is only spent on juveniles.
Understood, because we went through this a few years ago. And we talked about this and we talked about the value of an SRO. And we talked over and over about, you know, is an SRO's purpose to prevent an active shooter? And at that time, the answer was absolutely not. No. The SRO will actually not prevent. You know, that's not why you would be doing this. You would be doing it for another whole host of reasons. And so that's, I think, what's important to focus on. And so to understand what those other whole host of reasons are. And if we currently are of our students at Waddell and LDMS are missing out on that. If there's a drug problem at Waddell or LDMS and they need to be able to talk to a police officer to tell them about something, or if there are weapons being brought to the schools that they have, you know, to tell an officer that that's being done. So I think that's kind of my, what I'm trying to understand. Because also each year, we're always talked, we're told about all the walkthroughs that the police do and they're very present at our two public schools in the city. And that's always really helpful to read about in the in reports and everything from the department. So, you know, this was something that we talked about, what is it, four years ago, three years ago, that the school board was entertaining this idea within their budget. And what they said also at that time was that that an SRO really would only be charged to the school 10 months out of the year because the other two months, then they're not within the school. So part of their salary is actually not, two months of the salary would be not charged to the school or not be part of it. Because they're walking the beat, if you will, you know, they're patrolling the city of Lexington. So I feel like we're, you know, we've talked about this before. So I guess the school board, when they consider this kind of thing, if they believe this is an important expenditure, you know, will consider it again at that time. But I've always wondered, because it was always drilled into me. This has nothing to do with an active shooter. That was what we were talked about before. And so it was all the other reasons that a police officer is beneficial within a school. And so I always would ask, what are our kids in Lexington at LDMS and Waddell? Boy, what are they missing out on that kids at other schools and other elementary schools have access to an SRO? Are our kids missing out on something? Or would they benefit more from a guidance counselor?
So, and thank you. You bring up a great argument. Like I said, this is not having an SRO is not necessarily number one reason to stop or prevent an active shooter. It's a great benefit to have if an active shooter or any traumatic incident happens and an SRO is there. They can immediately respond and defuse the situation. But the major benefit is, like you said, having that SRO there to build relationships. So with an SRO, part of the training and being in a school is you have to conduct classes, do anti-bullying, conflict resolution, gang prevention with the children, showing them other ways of having adult protective life beyond the school system. They're there as a role model. And even though we do walkthroughs of schools, as you said, those are just the officers walking through. Yes, a student and a teacher sees them, but they're not building relationships. It's about building positive relationships that they now have a trust with law enforcement. And again, building intelligence for incidents that happen outside of school and inside of school, that they're a funnel and a conduit of helping to prevent crimes, but also being there as a resource if we need to connect them with social services or if we need to connect them with social services or mental health. We're an additional resource outside of teachers and guidance counselors that we know are already stretched thin in what they're doing. We're just an added layer for the students and even the staff members to assist them with.
Thank you, Chief. Any other questions?
Yeah, in, in regard to SRO, an SRO in Lexington, would, is there, would you envision that there be one to share with all four schools? Or would there be two, two or what, what are you thinking?
I would take what I can get and I would take one and we share. And then that's something we can revisit that if we see the true benefit of the SROs in the schools, then we can expand that. I will say, as Councilman Ziegler pointed out, the benefit I think that we may be missing with W and L, I did do a presentation to their criminal justice class a couple of weeks ago. And I had a student in a criminal justice class. It was a couple of them, but one in particular from Virginia Beach that had an SRO. Obviously, they're prevalent down there in Hampton Roads. And every one of them that had an SRO talked about the positive relationships that they had with the SROs and why it influenced them to even go into the criminal justice field. So again, I think we're missing the mark with actually building these positive relationships. And especially nowadays with the perception of law enforcement, we need to make sure that children see the other side of law enforcement rather than what's on the TV that they see. And I do have just, real quick, the little statistics that with the SROs doing what they're supposed to be doing, mentors, counselors and guidance counselors and coaching, that a twenty twenty one study showed that when SROs do that, that sixty seven percent decrease in court juvenile and juvenile court referrals, a seventy three percent decrease in violent crimes amongst juveniles, a forty three percent decrease in juveniles of color being arrested, and eighty percent increase in the graduation rate. So again, just some more statistics, statistics to show how having an SRO helps improve the quality of life for the students in the long term.
With those statistics, is it looking at high school, elementary, middle school or all the above?
They, they looked at all the school system nationwide, those that had an SRO.
Gotcha. Great. Thank you, Chief. Chief, while you're here, oh, by the way, I see Ricky's smiling face on the basketball court. And recently, could you speak to what he was volunteering or assisting with a video?
Well, oh, well, he was assisting with a video with DMV.
Right.
With DMV, but this impromptu photograph was actually a Corporal Hassan's now. He works midnight shifts. He gets off at eight o'clock in the morning. So on his own because he has a passion for youth and would love to be a school resource officer. These children would go out to the basketball court and play pickup basketball in the morning before school. And before he got off, he would go out on the courts and actually play with them. And he did not do this for praise or recognition. Someone noticed it, took a photo and put it on social media and that's how I saw it. So the only way, just coming across it by mistake and seeing this. But that's the type of influence and positive role model we want to be able to have on a consistent basis with our youth.
And we certainly had that prior generation with Bucky Miller. Had a big influence and connectivity to our local schools as well. Also wanted to, I, I received a, a email and communication from a gentleman. He was in town for a celebratory reason. His, his son was playing in the Hampton Sydney, Washington, a Lee lacrosse game, which Hampton Sydney won. And as he was navigating our streets or perhaps our potholes, had a misjudgment of operating his automobile and ran into a telephone pole. He said it was a miserable experience. He was frustrated and his car was completely damaged. But he said the shining beacon that made it a positive experience was Officer Drilling. And so I wanted to extend appreciation for the work that she did in helping this visitor to our town, to our city and making it a positive experience despite having a miserable, terrible accident and destroying his car. So please, please take that praise and appreciation back to her.
I absolutely will. Thank you, sir.
And lastly, congratulations on the multiple promotions. I won't go through all of them, but excited for the, the folks that you've elevated and the great staff that you have and the up and coming stuff, staff that are going through their paces right now to, to join the team.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Absolutely. Have a great night and keep up the good work. Next item on our agenda, public hearings. The first public hearing is in consideration of ordinance two thousand twenty two dash zero six regarding funds approved for fiscal year twenty twenty three budget. Call on Jen to introduce this subject and then we'll open up for public comment and then for council's consideration.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Excuse me. So two weeks ago, council graciously approved the fiscal year two thousand twenty three budget. Tonight, I am here to request council adopt ordinance two thousand twenty two dash zero six to appropriate the funds for that budget. So, I'm sorry. And also the fees necessary for funding the fiscal year twenty three budget. As discussed in our May fifth work session, based on the results of the real estate tax assessment, the real estate tax rate was recommended to be fixed at ninety two cents per one hundred dollars of assessed value for fiscal year twenty three. No tax increases were recommended or adopted for FY twenty three. Water and sewer rates reflect approximately an eight percent increase, which passes through to the residents and customers, the increases the city has seen from the Maury Service Authority. The complete FY twenty three fee, fee schedule is included in the proposed ordinance. And many of the city's fees for services have increased for FY twenty three to keep place, keep pace with inflation and our rising costs. So as required by law, this ordinance was advertised for a public hearing. And after you hear the public's comments, I would again recommend adoption of ordinance two thousand twenty two dash zero six.
Thank you, Jen. Any questions for Jen? Hearing none, I would like to open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to speak to this item to please raise your hand or step forward. And seeing no one that wants to speak to on this public hearing regarding the budget, I will close the public hearing at seven forty six and ask for council's consideration.
We'll move to adopt ordinance twenty twenty two oh six appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty three and establishing rates and fees necessary for funding the twenty three budget.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
We mentioned that some of the fees went up. Most of the fees went up for the, what about, and just, we don't have a comparison what they were and what they are now, because I, I don't have that committed to memory. What, for example, for example, construction permits, did that percentage go up? Are we charging more for a construction permit now than we were last year? I mean, that's, that's a big one that, that people incur.
We are. And so I worked with, with Arnie in planning to go through the, the fees associated with planning and zoning and building inspections, et cetera. It was the recollection of staff on his team that the last time those fees had really been increased overall was two thousand fourteen, despite some one offs here and there. And so specifically the construction one.
Yeah, like, like the, the commercial, the residential construction cost in the, in the commercial. I'm kind of just wanted, wondering that. I mean, that's one that.
Right. And I want to, Arnie, do you remember what they were before? I'm sorry. They went up slightly.
They are currently four tenths of a percent for residential projects and seven tenths of a percent for commercial. I think we went up one tenth of a percent for each of those, if I remember correctly.
Okay, but, but a twenty percent increase. I mean, or a, okay, I mean, that's helpful.
The city manager asked us to do a, propose a five percent increase across the board. Then I was trying to do math and what's five percent of seven tenths of a percent? So we just decided let's go from one round number up to the next round number.
Helpful. I just was wondering, I mean, you know, a lot of these other ones going up five dollars or ten dollars to a resident. But the, the commercial construction costs, the residential construction costs, some people don't realize I'm doing an addition on my house and oh, I owe another couple thousand or, or more to, to the city. So.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Have a motion in a second. Who would ask for a roll call vote? Mr. Smith, Ms. Strong.
Hi.
Mr. Ziegler, Mr. Ayers.
Hi.
Mr. Alligood.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very much. And good work, Jen. And look forward to navigating the upcoming budget. Next item, six dot two is to receive public hearing comments relative to a purchase agreement for the sale of the Spotswood site. And I would invite city manager to introduce this and then we will have a time for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've been at this for quite some time, as everyone knows. And because we've been at it for a while, I want to go over some of the history and I'm going to read it because it's been extensive the things we've gone through over a number of years even prior to my arrival. So tonight, city council has.
Jim, let me subvert you a second. Can folks in the audience here, okay? Mary Rain, can you hear his comments? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Tonight, city council has before to final purchase agreement for sale of the Spotswood site that has been fully reviewed and agreed to by representatives of Echelon Resources and the city attorney and myself representing the city. The intent of this agreement is to provide Echelon Resources the opportunity to perform due diligence on the Spotswood site and then to satisfy the obligations specified within this agreement to develop the site. As a recap of how we have come to this place today, Echelon Resources had remained engaged with the city, awaiting the opportunity to perform their part of an agreement reached with the city to develop the Enfield Water Tower site. This was in the period of late two thousand nineteen through two thousand and twenty, when it, when it was determined the city did not have a clean title to the property and legal efforts were being made to clear that matter up. During the latter part of that timeframe, summer two thousand of twenty, Echelon Resources inquired about the city-owned parcel on Spotswood Street that for many years had been identified for future development. After a preliminary review of the site, Mr. Edwin Gaskin of Echelon Resources approached me and asked if the city would consider an unsolicited offer for the Spotswood site. I conferred with the city attorney and it was determined that no impediments existed that would prevent such consideration. The city attorney further advised that the city should be willing to consider unsolicited offers, offers at any time from any party, especially when it comes to providing housing. During the late summer of two thousand and twenty, Mr. Gaskin did submit an unsolicited offer. And during that fall and until the end of twenty twenty, he and I evaluated formats in terms of this agreement. During this time, the city attorney did review the proposed offer on a number of occasions, as did Mr. Tim Davy, who had provided earlier development consultation for the city. In January of two thousand twenty one, the unsolicited proposal and draft purchase agreement were presented to city council for review and consideration. Considerable concerns were voiced by the public at that time and city council conscientiously considered these concerns over a number of months. Primary among those concerns was the matter of continued use of the Piovano Building by Rara. In late spring of two thousand twenty one, Rara submitted a purchase proposal to the city for the purchase of the Piovano Building. The purchase was approved and city council then determined to move forward with the sale and development of the remainder of the Spotswood site. In early summer of two thousand twenty one, city council determined to provide a process for the submission and evaluation of credentials and conceptual proposals for development of the site. The opportunity to provide these credentials and concepts for consideration of being selected as the developer partner for the site continued until the end of October twenty twenty one. City staff then reviewed these proposals and, and, excuse me, and in January of this year submitted each of the two proposals received to the city council with a recommendation for selecting Echelon Resources as the priority development developer partner for the site. After thorough public review, comment and consideration, city council did unanimously approve Echelon Resources as the preferred developer partner for the site with the intent of entering into a purchase agreement for that purpose. This is the agreement for you tonight. This agreement is essentially the document that both the Spotswood Collaborative and Echelon Resources had submitted with their individual credentials and conceptual proposals in the fall of twenty twenty one. Further the agreement in substantial, further the agreement in substantially the same form was also initially presented to city council for consideration by Echelon Resources in January of twenty twenty one. The current decision before city council is consideration of this agreement. However, in order to better understand what is entailed by this agreement, I would note that this agreement does not provide consent or approval of a site plan, rezoning or conditional use permit for any final proposal that may be brought forth by Echelon Resources. It does not approve, specify or limit any aspects of the design of the buildings or layout of the site. Nonetheless, Echelon has consistently presented a design of the site with one building of three to four, three to four floors. And their position as city council has been well aware of this and have provided prior support for this concept. Of course, this final submit and all zoning requests will be reviewed by the plant, reviewed by the planning commission and as is authorized by city code and will then be presented to city council for consideration as is also authorized within city code. What this document does do is outline the terms for the purchase of this property and the commitment to develop it for the purpose of constructing residential apartments as desired by city council. It provides for the obligations of each party to the other and the condition under which Echelon Resources can move forward with this purchase. First exercising all due diligence that is required for the proposed development. Only when the required conditions within this agreement have been met and when Echelon Resources is confident that the proposal they have in mind can be built, will the sale be finalized. A super majority of council is required to approve the agreement since the property will be sold if all required conditions are met. Further, council's approval tonight confirms agreement with the terms herein and permits the due diligence efforts by Echelon Resources to begin. Also, for your better understanding of the proposal that is visioned by Echelon Resources and their activities during the due diligence period, Mr. Edwin Gaskin, Mr. Cosby could not be here tonight, are present to answer any questions that city council may have. So my recommendation to you tonight is to hold the public here regarding the sale of the Spotswood site and receive comments as may be presented to the public. I also recommend it delay any consideration by city council until further public hearing is held on July seventh at a regular city council meeting and be prepared to consider the disposition of the agreement at that time. However, I would note that you do not have to wait. This is my recommendation. If at any time tonight or even at our next meeting, you want to make a motion to consider it, you have every right to do so. I just know in the past, we've taken some time for due diligence and that was my thought in making that recommendation. So that's all I have to share with you tonight. Thank you.
Members of council have questions for the city manager? Or for Arnie? Hearing none. Before I open the public comment, I'm going to be presumptuous and anticipate Mr. Gaskin has no comments to make ahead of time, but can respond after the public hearing or yes, after the public hearing and issues raised. And then for council's questions. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for this item on Spotswood at seven fifty six. And I did not see anyone had signed up, but that doesn't mean you don't get to speak. So is there anyone who would like to speak to this subject? Philip, please come forward and if you could state your name and address for the record. And we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Two minutes, all right?
Three, three.
I needed two hours. All right, I'm Phil Patterson. I'm a resident of Houston Street. And maybe for personal reasons, I'm strongly against the whole development. How many units are there going to be?
This is a time for your public comment, not for debate.
Well, then.
But we can answer that question.
Traffic lights, where you're going to have to have traffic lights where Spotswood goes into Nelson. You're going to need a traffic light where Spotswood goes into Houston. I live on Houston. The traffic right now, speed limit might be twenty five, but everyone's running through there at forty five, fifty. And it's, and it's, it's a residential neighborhood. Taylor Street's a residential neighborhood. Are the property values, do you think will go down as a result of this? And, and I guess that's my comment.
Fair enough. Thank you, sir. Are there others who would like to speak? Mary Rain, please come forward. And if you will also state your name and address for the record and offer three minutes for your presentation.
That's plenty of time.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Rain Paxson and my address is fifty nine Sycamore Lane. I live at Kendall. But I've been a lifelong, I mean, almost of resident and I'm opposed to this Spotswood development and have been. of resident and I'm opposed to this Spotswood development and have been since it was, I was disappointed. I thought maybe we learned something from Buna Vista. And in that disaster, they had a, a developer from outside come in and failing new, uh, town manager. And so they were sold on a golf course and they had been a disaster. We have a similar situation, I think. I would, I know that the deal has gone through and what I would urge is that if it does go through, if the buildings to that they, you will pay attention to Arthur Anderson's, um, plan and that the height of the buildings will be, um, in, uh, in, in, in sync with the neighborhood. And otherwise we don't, we don't want a, a high rise. And you know, sometime, I mean, you might not think of it now, but there may be a time when you'll be looking for a place to be buried. And the city has, uh, a plan for a columnarium, which would actually give a revenue to the city. So I think it's a very poor decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paxton, and appreciate your insights and for being with us this evening. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this issue? Not hearing anyone else who would like to speak to this issue. Uh, I'd like to close the public hearing at seven fifty nine and, uh, would ask Mr. Gaskins if he wants to make any comments. And, um, available for council's questions. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, good evening, members of council, mayor, city staff. Um, happy to be here at Edwin Gaskin with Echelon Resources. I think you know me by now. Um, happy to answer any questions you have. I didn't bring a presentation because I think we've all heard enough on it, um, to answer Mr. Patterson's questions. The, we are currently modeling sixty two units and the project expectations companion document that is part of this, this package, if you will, limits to sixty five units. So that will be the density. Um, I can't speak to Ms. Paxton's comparison to the Buna Vista Golf Course from what I read on that. That was truly a debacle, but there's really few tangible, uh, I, I guess we're related thoughts to what we're proposing here. Uh, we have consistently proposed a building height of three to four stories. Um, probably three full stories and essentially a walkout basement level taking advantage of the terrain. So that's been the massing that we proposed since the beginning. Uh, that's considered technically a mid-rise building. Um, uh, we also believe a high-rise building wouldn't be congruent with the neighborhood. Um, and it serves a sort of a stepping massing from the single-family residential along Houston and thereabouts uh, to the more institutional, uh, uses adjacent. So, um, any change is uh, disconcerting at, at the least and frightening at the worst. Uh, we're not looking to inspire any of those negative emotions. Uh, we're looking to have a quality development on a, on a wonderful piece of property, uh, effectively trying to achieve what we all try to do in theory and municipal planning, and that's achieve the highest and best use of a piece of property. And you know, that, that is a difficult road to hoe. Uh, a lot of people have a different take on what that might be. And there are certainly a lot of laudable possible uses for this or any site. But what we have proposed is, is but one, uh, and that's been, I think, as, as the city manager has, has, um, suggested, been, been thoroughly discussed. I am happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Gaskins. Members of council have any questions for the applicant?
I'll ask one. Uh, I know it's somewhat included in the contract, but can you describe, I know you don't have to it completely designed, but describe what kind of screening you expect and, um, where you would use green space within your project.
Oh, I wish I had a visual to show because I, I'm a terrible describer. Um, uh, again, most of the massing of the building will be um, against the, the, the high side of the site, which is closer to the Piovano building. Um, we have, we have purposefully laid out in accordance to, um, zoning setbacks. The majority, uh, will conform with all the setback requirements as we understand them. But, um, actually adding to that in terms of the buffer to the single-family residential areas along Houston. Uh, we're trying to maximize that. So the building isn't overwhelming that. So we'll have green space, parking and, and then the building. So that's what we're anticipating. Um, we tend to, we, we have not designed out the site completely, obviously. Um, uh, most of the service areas will be tucked in the back and properly screened. Uh, again, we want to put our, our best facade forward, so to speak. Um, and, uh, to sort of continue that thought, though this wasn't your question, but it builds on a a pre-meeting conversation I was having with the mayor in terms of sort of the process. You know, what we're waiting for is obviously a signed purchase contract that will allow us to begin our due diligence activities. The first of which is really to do geotech work. We try to figure out if there's problematic carst or other subsurface criteria that could be at best inconvenient and a worst terminal to our concept. Uh, once we sort of remove that boogeyman, uh, then we can really set about figuring out what the usable uh, polygons are on the site and figure out how those fit with the zoning setbacks and such. Then and only then can we really design out the massing of the building. But it should fit based on, uh, what we've talked about before to that three to four story massing. Um, I guess concept that we presented, but so we're several, so my point is we're several steps away to be able to present what I think everybody's hankering to see what this thing's going to look like exactly. Sorry, that was a very long-winded answer.
No, that was great. I'm glad you added on to it. And then just to clarify, uh, our zoning requirement for that area is forty five feet in height from the entrance up to the peak of the roof. And so when we're talking about three to four stories, so people understand that it is forty five feet that you, that you're really limited by.
I'm sure Arnie has told me that several times, but I'm, uh, I don't commit to memory what I know he's going to tell me again, so.
And Arnie, if I just said anything wrong, holler, but that's.
It's always tough when you start quoting, um, details of our code, um, but if you have it in your memory, but.
That was impressive, by the way.
Yeah, suffice to say, um, the project will be required to go through the, as the city manager indicated, through the planning commission and conform with all of our um, uh, policies and, um, standards for the, for any construction, uh, in our city and the zoning requirements, uh, therefore. So any other questions from council? Mr. Ziegler?
Got a question. Uh, thanks for being here tonight. Um, I think I asked this question before, but you know, we've been having multiple meetings, it seems for three or four years. So a lot of your projects are redevelopment, the, the majority. I mean, probably what ninety percent or ninety five percent or even.
About ninety, yep.
So, uh, can you tell us or give us an example of a non-redevelopment project from scratch, open, you know, site and what you built that could that, that give, give folks a feel because I mean, obviously your website highlights twenty redevelopment projects that are just tremendous. Schools, warehouses, uh, that have just been dilapidated and, and a drain on resources and you've made them, you know, livable, no pun intended. Um, but from scratch, can you talk about that?
Well, that's, that's, you know, um, we, we don't have many of those. And when we first approached this site, it was a much bigger site, you know, with the Piovanni site included and we, um, took on that much bigger site at about looking for about a hundred and fifty units partnered with Urban Corps, which had that long history of new construction. So since the site became smaller, we had to tighten things up, uh, they became less interested. Uh, so we per se don't have that round up execution project to show you. We have several sites in the pipeline for new construction, uh, but we are planning to partner with a construction team with that credible experience. But if we're, for us to recruit that team member, we need to have a, a zoned product, uh, ready to show. So, you know, admittedly from a strict echelon standpoint, that is a, I guess, a resume deficiency, but hence the long and winding road that's brought us to this point from where we started. Um, but again, that's a gap in the roster that can be filled once we have defined what it is on the site that we're building, where it is, what it looks like, how many stories, what materials it's out of, then we can recruit the very qualified construction partner to execute that. We're happy to share those credentials as we go. Um, we're all specialists and, um, we're happy to recruit to our roster, the qualified specialists to execute at the appropriate time. May not the answer, maybe not the answer you're looking for, but that's the truth.
Well, it's the only answer. I mean, that's kind of, I just, because we, we talked about that once before and I just went, thought, hey, here we're closer to, to an agreement and let's mention that again. Thank you.
And I think that's, uh, I guess sort of a compliment to you all, the staff and us, the fact that the, you know, paradigm has shifted over the last literally eighteen months that we've been working on this, um, and we've had to be nimble to adjust with it. And that means, you know, flexing, um, the roster as needed to bring the talent to bear to execute a quality project. What we're proposing there isn't complicated. It's been done in many places in many ways, and we think we can bring the best of all those examples to here in a quality manner. Well, is it a leap of faith? By you all, I guess, you know, understanding that experience gap direct to our nameplate, it is. Uh, but again, I think we can also recognize that the, um, construction expertise exists regionally, locally and statewide to bring to this, uh, opportunity to execute well.
Any other questions or comments for the applicant? Mr. Alligood?
Thanks for coming. One of the points that I would like to put on the table is an item in the proposed contract that, uh, indicates that the money that the good faith money is five thousand dollars on a proposed sale price of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And additionally, that, uh, an item in the contract is that it's totally refundable if you choose to walk away. I would suggest that the price not be five thousand, but ten percent of the three fifty. It seems like a, a better number, at least from the city's point of view. Uh, the refundability, uh, I would have an issue with that as well. The, uh, uh, the project that you had on the water tower, whatnot, that you walked away from, whatnot, that, uh, uh, raises some concerns to me. But the five thousand dollars, which is less than two percent of the overall value of the project seems a little light. And, uh, want, want to know your thoughts on that.
We're comfortable with the terms as, as they've been presented.
Sure, I would be too. Uh, it's, it's pretty, pretty sweet in there to do that. But, uh, I would, I would have an objection to that price on the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Alligood. I don't know if any council members want to respond or.
Well, I didn't know. I thought we were just kind of asking questions of the applicant or, you know, Mr. Gaskin, and then we would have council discussion consideration afterwards and we can talk amongst ourselves.
Very good.
That's more of a question for us.
Certainly. Certainly. Any other questions for Mr. Gaskins? Uh, I'd be remiss in my role as mayor if I didn't say thank you and also remind you that as we move forward, um, if this is, uh, approved by council, um, in tonight or at some point in time in the future, um, that we have professionals locally that can support your efforts, um, with the geotech and, and other pieces.
We've actually reached out to several of those already.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. This time I'll open it to council.
Well, since Mr. Alligood mentioned the point about the deposit, I mean, I, I do personally think that that's, um, you know, it's an excellent point. Uh, just a little while ago, we were talking about passing in a new ordinance that raised the costs of just about every city service because we've got to keep pace with, you know, uh, the cost of providing a service. And here potentially, uh, the city could work with the developer for, uh, potentially eighteen months. Uh, in an eighteen month due time period would necessitate a ten thousand dollar deposit because he can gain the extra six months for another five thousand dollars. But at the end of eighteen months, um, that could be refundable at that time, the ten thousand dollars, and that would be ten thousand, uh, dollars, eighteen months of, of staff time potentially, uh, providing some service or, or some, some assistance. Uh, so I, I just, I mentioned something about that. Um, you know, the, the five thousand dollars with the water tower was not refundable. Um, and at that time that contract made sense and the developer entered into that contract. Um, and so I, I do just see the point that Mr. Alligood raised. Um, so warrants more consideration.
I do, but I, I want to clear, I, I do too, uh, uh, but I, I want to clarify, is that, is that five thousand dollars refundable for any particular reason? Or I, I mean, I thought that they were certain. Help, help me to understand that better. It is, excuse me, it is refundable. Um, if there's a issue where the site does not work or the concept does not work within that due diligence period, then yes, it is refundable. Absolutely. If the due diligence, yeah, obviously, but, but if it were a larger number, it would typically be refundable too, correct? That depends on the terms of the agreement. I, I couldn't say what is typical to any variety of agreements out there. Um, it could be the same terms with just a different dollar amount. Right. No. But this is the proposal we've been looking at for some time, correct? That is correct. Okay.
Ms. Strong.
I think it's a minor part of the contract and I think it's a, it's bad policy for us to debate something as minor as that when the city manager and the city attorney have been working on it. And more importantly, I think Mr. Gaskins and Echelon have been with us for over a year and a half on this project. They're not walking away unless there's serious defects with the property, in which case it makes sense not to.
Yeah, I, I.
To receive their money back if the property is not developable.
I, I agree with that. I, I think if we were to address this particular situation, we should have done it a, a, a long time ago. I think, I think at, at this stage given the, the that it's peripheral really to the thing, I, I would prefer to move forward with what we have.
So in me echoing what Mr. Alligood said, you know, we had a public, uh, hearing, uh, because this is the first time really for the public to provide, uh, their thoughts on, on the purchase agreement. And so we didn't, uh, really have, we had a couple of comments, but they weren't particularly about the agreement. And so I happened to be contacted by members of the public that could not be here. And so you know, this is the public's first shot at the agreement. So I don't feel that it's nitpicking at the agreement if we're doing the work of the public. Um, and so another point that a member of the public made to me was, you know, this is a valuable asset within the city. Um, two point three acres, it was a little bit larger. Um, but, but it's a valuable asset and it's sure it hasn't been developed for, for many years and council has talked about developing it, but it's an asset and we're tying it up for potentially twelve to eighteen months for, for zero, for, for, for no dollars. Um, and that's, that's something, you know, we want to get to the end. Um, but this was just as it was framed to me by a, a member of the public, that's is that what we would do with our own asset that, that we would let someone have access to our own assets for twelve or eighteen months? Um, and then potentially, you know, walk away for, for a minimal, uh, charge. Uh, so it's just a way to look at it. I, I feel bad if you think we're, we're nitpicking. I mean, it's an agreement. I certainly understand why Mr. Gaskin would say I'm comfortable with the agreement as presented. Um, but doing the work of the public, uh, and being contacted by the public that, and since they were not able to be here. Um, you know, it's our job to look at a contract. This is committing the city. Uh, we've said we want to partner with someone all along. We're going to partner uh, and provide access to this property for twelve months or eighteen months, hopefully shorter, hopefully ground is broken. But, you know, I think it's worth, worth discussing and, and putting it out there. So that's kind of why I piggyback on what Mr. Alligood said. Think it's a good point.
Well, and, and if I may speak now on the the asset that we, that we have that, that you're, that you're talking about, we've had before us, um, for years. Um, and now someone is finally, finally acting, um, on, uh, and yes, an unsolicited proposal to develop the property, but a, a five thousand dollar, um, be to, to, uh, ensure that the asset is, is held. Um, is, is not a, a, a deal breaking point for me. It also, um, the, the developer is, is planning on, can, um, you know, putting forward significant resources to, to study whether the product, product and asset is in fact developable. Um, I'm not going to get hung up on if it's five or, or thirty. It really doesn't make any difference in, in the long run of developing this asset, which we've been trying to do for as long as I can remember. It's been in our comp plan. It's been in our strat plan. It's been in, in, in city manager work plans. Um, and that's my position on it. Thank you.
I, I would, um, add, when you look at the comparison about tying up the property, um, I would say if you're looking at your personal home and you're marketing it and someone says, I want to first write a refusal and puts a down payment on it. And for some reason the deal doesn't happen, you're still marketing the house. And for some reason, the deal doesn't happen, you're still marketing the house in case that deal falls through. We've not been actively marketing this. So it's a little bit different in that capacity. Again, just conceptionally, an incredibly valid point. Interesting circumstance as far as looking at it. I don't think the risk to the city is significant relative to the outcome of a successful project. And to Mr. Smith's point, millions of dollar investment in our community and providing housing so that we have, uh, I remind council, the goal with the Spotswood property for over 20 years has been to develop it specifically for apartments. And, and so we're on the, the cusp of that as we work through, and I think it's important. But David, to your point, the, the more information that we get from our citizens, hopefully they're in tuned, can, you know, listen to the meetings if they can't make it. And aren't just looking at it from a business transaction perspective and that every good business transaction has a, a 30% down payment or a 50% down payment versus $5,000. This isn't necessarily a business transaction. As you pointed out, and we've talked about, we're partnering with Echelon, proposing to partner with Echelon and, and move forward. So the, the 5,000 is insignificant compensation to the city. But if the deal at the land is not developable, it gets returned. But I think the, the greater risk is not moving forward and seeing the, um, the finished product and the investment in our community.
I thought, I thought you were going to quote that it's all about the terms also. You know, that's, that's been something that's been drilled into us and, and not to get fixated. But, but again, I, I think it's important. I, I wanted to voice this concern that was brought to me by a member of the public. I certainly don't develop commercial real estate for a living. I lean on other folks that, that know more than I do. And so they pointed this out and they said, uh, please ask these questions. Take the temperature of council because, um, you know, that part of the contract is definitely in the developer's favor.
Right.
A, a, and, and so as we partner, um, you know, part of the contract, we will share expenses. We would, you know, I mean, so, so I just felt that it was important that we consider that. It's glaring to some members of the public. Uh, and if we didn't consider it, that, that we wouldn't be doing our job for that, for that part of it.
I hope that you'll invite them to join us and also direct them to staff to work through those details to, to get that information ahead of time if at all possible. Mr. Smith. Ms. Alexander.
I just want to say that I, I think that that was a valid concern that, that came from the public. This has been going on a long time and, you know, wish we had reviewed this in regard to that piece of it earlier than later. This is the 11th hour for this process. So a lesson learned. And I'm, I, I said something not long ago in writing that I talked about establishing some standards of policy and procedure for these kinds of negotiations, that there's some consistency with how we move through one of these types of development processes. And this could be, be one of those things that we consider that, you know, for a purchase of property that a, you know, 10% down or whatever be considered rather than something just thrown out there, hoping that it will stick, such as the 5,000. So I hope that this is food for thought for the future. We don't have much more land to, to consider, so it might be a moot point, but it might be less of a headache for the next one that we're working on to consider the sta- some standards and procedures.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other members of council have any questions?
I just do for all of council. I just want to make sure, is that the only issue we have with this contract at this time? I mean, the plan right now is not to, not to address this at the next meeting, but then to address it at the July 2nd.
Well, I, I'll, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I am going to not close the public hearing and it will carry over to the, um, June. Did I close it, Chuck?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't mean to.
Was, well, in, I'm sorry, Jim's notes, it says ever to have another public hearing in July.
The ambition was to, uh, keep it open. From a process standpoint, can I reopen the public hearing, city manager or city attorney? If, if council has no objection, we will leave the, uh, public hearing open and carry it to the June 16th meeting. And, um, the recommendation from the city manager is to carry it to the July 7th meeting, uh, where we would then ultimately consider it. We can, uh, change that and you could vote tonight and close it and vote tonight. Or we want to close and vote on the 16th. But the recommendation from the city manager, I would like to keep it open until council does choose to consider it, just so that we can have additional public input. So first question is, is there any objection from council to keep the public hearing open?
No.
Hearing none. Uh, this public hearing will re- remain open. And, uh, it will be on our agenda for June 16th. If members of council, uh, find other information or, uh, as other people may read the, the contract have concerns. I would encourage you to refer them to the city staff for clarification, for questions. If they have recommendations on what we may want to change on it. Certainly share that with staff for any consideration, but you know, this is the agreement that's before us and recommended by, uh, staff for our, our use.
As this has dragged on for some time, uh, my recommendation would be actually to vote at our next city council meeting, not to extend this for, for two city council meetings.
Fair enough.
So, so that, that's my thinking on this.
Okay.
I would agree with that. Which would be good if anyone, if there's any other concerns that we voice it now, discuss it as a council right now.
I would prefer to do what was initially suggested to discuss it next time and vote in the first July meeting.
Very good. But we'll keep the public hearing open and, um, council can talk amongst themselves on, uh, way forward at the 16th and, um, then perhaps to July. Any other? We'll close that, uh, subject and move on to 6.3, which I get giddy and effusive as a former school board member and the son of a school teacher. Looking at the public comments for applicants for our two school board terms. Want to welcome, uh, Tim Diette, Mary Beth. Manager over. Thank you. Tammy Dunn and Casey De La Sandro is not here in person, but has also made application. Excited to have, um, multiple people for this position. Went through a, an incredibly strategic circumstance of the lineup for whom to call to, uh, come see council and be interviewed first. And I went, um, I think, uh, reverse alphabetical first name. So Tim Diette, uh, you're up first. If you will come and state your name and address for the record and, um, any statements you'd like to make, and then council has questions for you.
Sure. Uh, so my name is Tim Diette. I live at 908 Shenandoah Road in Lexington. So, uh, I'll, I'll keep my statement short because I included some information in the application, but certainly happy to talk about any points you might like to discuss. Frankly, I went back and forth of whether to put in, I've served six years now on Lexington City School Board. It's been, um, an interesting six years. And, but I decided frankly, from the overall, uh, composition on the board that I thought I could continue to do good serving the citizens of Lexington. I thought, um, that having some, uh, folks with additional experience, I think it's a nice to have mix. It's nice to always have fresh voices. And so certainly if you go in that direction, I would be understanding. But I think having some, uh, voices that have been there a while to speak, to example, for history around the SRO issue or other things that have come up, I've noticed particularly in these last, uh, in the last two years, I would say several instances where I didn't realize, oh, I'm the only person who was around for that. And, and in fact, predating our current superintendent as well. So I just have found that useful. I hope other sorts of, uh, qualifications, um, which sort of hopefully merited being appointed before remain in effect. But certainly happy to answer any questions you have.
Very good. Thank you, Tim. Members of council, questions? Mr. Alligood.
Thanks for coming. Recently, the governor eh, talked about performances, performance in the public school system uh, dropping in this, in Virginia and there are a lot of concerns uh, expressed as to what to do in the measurements, uh, therefore. With regard to Lexington City Schools, uh, have performances dropped?
Well, I mean,
Tim, before you answer, I just want to let you and other, I, I failed to mention previously. Council members will ask the same questions to all applicants. So, um,
So as, um, an economist who studies education, uh, teaches the economics of education. So my understanding, uh, first more broadly is that there, there are some different ways to look at the data that was presented, uh, by the governor. For example, the way the comparisons were na- were made between NAEP scores and SOLs might not be the way that would be traditionally done. So I think there's some concerns there about whether, what the real trend is. Uh, I also think just in general, uh, with, with COVID, I said, there's no question that it's had a negative impact. But I think it's really difficult to tell, um, sort of the true state of things at this point, frankly. I wouldn't trust the data, uh, basically. I will say for, for Lexington, um, you know, again, the official results aren't out yet, but my understanding is that the results were actually quite encouraging. You know, the, that said, I know that, you know, we're working hard on, uh, on some innovative, uh, for this year, uh, summer programming for some students to do, uh, careful intervention. I know in the last several years, you know, they've really worked, you know, the T, the, both the administration and teachers have worked really hard to identify, uh, particular students, right? I mean, in Lexington is in all schools. Not all students need the same sorts of interventions and it's really important to pay attention to the needs of every student. Um, and so I think that the current, uh, administration's been doing a good job on that. But yeah, COVID presented challenges. There's, there's absolutely no question about that. Um, my wife's an eighth grade English teacher in Maury River. You know, she reports some of the same things and frankly, teaching at WNL, I would report some of the same things that are true nationally. So I don't think Lexington is, uh, you know, exempt from any of that.
The part two is, uh, how to recover.
Well, um, I think, you know, one thing is, uh, you know, I'm frankly very encouraged in the current hiring environment, how few openings we have. We have no openings for full-time teaching positions right now. Um, so that's actually very encouraging. I thought we would have more trouble hiring this year than we would. So I think one is, is the most important element is the teachers, right? And so I'm excited that we have a full set of, of teachers for the fall. Uh, you know, and, uh, so I'm certainly excited about that. You know, and, and I've been impressed frankly, working with the, the superintendent and the principals that they have been thinking consistently, okay, how do we do this better? What are the ways in which we can, you know, make changes to try to reach every student where they need to be reached. And, um, so I, I, you know, I think, a- and as well, not, not, not stopping concern about our students, uh, at eighth grade, but thinking about them as they go on to our high school as well, at Rockbridge County High School. And so good conversations there as well. Again, supporting all learners. So for example, through the, you know, the hi- the high quality, what I'll call tech programs. That's what I called it when I was a kid, but, um, you know, and my, my son has certainly enjoyed.
What is an area you'd like to focus on in your next term on city council?
Well, uh, you know, and certainly I think it's been, become, um, more of a focus in the last two years, um, but it has been evolving. How I respond to, uh, to public comment. So for example, doing more, um, to reach back out directly and have phone conversations with folks who send me, uh, letters. You know, examples around, for example, recent concern around text, around books and who should have access to what books? And how do we sort our, 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 our books? What's appropriate for, for young people? So I think doing more of that, I think right along with that though is, frankly, just an emphasis on trying to be a relatively steady hand. I think it's important in this divisive world we're living in to keep listening to everyone. Uh, and to really understand where are people coming from, what, you know, what are their concerns? There's legitimacy behind sort of all the different folks' concerns. Maybe we're struggling to talk to each other, but how can we maybe bridge that? So I think that would be the other, uh, key point of emphasis for me.
Mr. Ziegler.
So I'm going to ask the same question of each person. So I think you already got a little bit of it with Leslie's question, but, and you can be very succinct. You, you don't have to expound too much, but your top three goals. And would if it, top, top three budgetary goals and would an SRO be one of them? That's the question.
I wouldn't want to commit to one way or another on an SRO at, at this point. I was around, uh, for, before it was a long and complicated, uh, discussion. I think a lot of it comes down to frankly, details of who's going to do the hiring, what exactly is the training, what exactly is the relationship going to be? And thoughtfully looking at what are the, uh, to the point you raised, what are, what's the trade-off, right? So if it's funded all by grants, that's, that's great. Um, I mean, there is, I know, I think, and, you know, and it is that question of, well, how confident are we that that, those grants are going to continue to be there? Because certainly, you know, it's a challenging, if you bring in someone, to me, you're making a significant commitment to that person. And you don't suddenly go, well, the grant ran out, you're fired. Uh, that's not a great way to run things in my opinion. So thinking through, is this really, you know, the highest use of funds, you know, we could have? So thinking that through. So just for clarification, you want to be a budget priority or broader priority?
No, just, it can be broader or budget, but I mean, honestly, uh, kind of top three goals. Sometimes people have come in with one, they're just one topic, but just thinking for each candidate, you know, just thinking of our school system.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I mean, number one is making sure that we're examining what each individual student needs. You know, that starts to, um, you know, we have an amazing, uh, faculty, uh, uh, and staff that, that support students as it is. You know, and so some of that might be, you know, making sure that we have the right staffing level so that teachers and are able to sort of, you know, take the time to know what is it that each student needs. But you know, that's certainly, that to me, that is always really a concern, right? There are gaps that we see in the test scores, back to the issue of test scores. Um, and so, you know, we don't want to, um, yeah, I mean, to me, that, that's effort that we need to be continuing to make. So that's, that's, that's number one. You know, with the continuing challenges in the labor market, certainly, you know, attention on retaining the high quality staff that we have. You know? And, uh, you know, and the third is keeping an eye on the sort of, for the general taxpayers, right? Making sure that we're getting, you know, for the money that we spend at the high school, are we getting a good return on that? Are they being, um, you know, careful watchdogs, uh, for each dollar? And, you know, within the schools, you know, yes, we're, I'm there for the students and the teachers, but I'm also there for all of the taxpayers of Lexington. And so, you know, when the superintendent comes up with a, a new idea, that's great. Now let's think through, is that, you know, okay, let's think through, what are all of your different ideas? Let's go through and rank them. What are the budget obligations? Are we able to, how are we going to go out funding that?
Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. I know that when I was on the school board, there were certain things that took place that we can become especially proud, excuse me, proud of. So what would be something that would be your number one accomplishment during your term, last term?
Well, one, I don't think, yeah, I don't think I could take credit for anything.
No, I'm talking about the school.
The school, okay. That's challenging. And to me, actually, again, looking broadly, what's sort of what's going on nationally would actually be the morale of the teachers. That for me, they, they, throughout this challenging pandemic, you know, they've managed to come through this and, um, not that the folks didn't face a lot of, uh, challenging, uh, situations and, and have some frustration. But, you know, I've heard from, uh, you know, on some of the contentious issues we dealt with through the pandemic, I heard from teachers on both sides of the issue. I take that, I actually take a lot of pride in that, that they were willing to reach out and, and feel that they would be heard. But, you know, at the end of this, Um, but you know, at the end of this school year, and for example, at the retirement ceremony to hear some of the teachers. Saying their thanks, you know, to the school board, and that's really more about, it's about us. And I think that, that sense, uh, and being able to maintain that through the pandemic is, is what I'm. Most excited. If you want to go really narrow, I'm really, I love the activity bus. I think it's, it's made life easier for lots of families, um, and, and neighborhoods and connecting. And I think it's a lot of good things from there.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Ayers. Um, David stole my SRO question, but, um, I, I will try a different tack. Um. So what are your thoughts on, uh, uh, elected school board members? Do you think that's a good idea or not a good idea? I'm, I'm curious what you think.
You know, I, I can see both arguments, you know, I have no trouble looking at sort of both of those. Um. You know, I, I'll admit that, uh, I would not have served on the school board if it was an elected position. You know, uh, there's probably some folks out maybe who are watching this were like. That proves my point. Um, fair enough, fair enough. Um, so I, I think, you know, it, it raises a barrier, but it's not, you know. I could see the argument that's like, well, but that's not an unreasonable barrier. I think if people want to serve the community, that's, that's what we should do. Um, my, you know, my big concerns, uh, my biggest concern actually is, is thinking through, um. To me, a nice thing of having council is, uh, be able to make the appointments is thinking through, what are the voices? Are we getting all the right voices to the table, uh, for those, for the school board? Um, and, and so it's just challenging for voters to sort of collectively do that and, and reach the, the right point. And so, um, you know, I, I think we'll, we'll move along and move forward, however, however that, that falls out. Um, you know, personally, I think there, there's more to be gained. I, I think things are working quite well. Um, so personally, I would not. Uh, support a change.
Very good. Mr. Smith, and it's okay not to have a question. I'm sure the applicants would not mind.
Yeah, I like flashbacks to my dissertation.
Yeah, I'm, I'm flashing back to when I was in the classroom and, and, um. Seen the progress that's been made, uh, at, at Lilburn as far as some of the different programming that's been put in as far as. Uh, the woodworking and, and, and rocketry that, um, Spencer's doing and. And, uh, I, I got to sub for, uh, Laura, uh, Joyner. And did some, did some yoga with, with, uh, with the class and, um, seeing that kind of programming is encouraging to see how. The board and, and the administration is, is, uh, welcoming al- alternative. Uh, education, uh, opportunities. Um, so I thought that was, was awesome. Um, but when I was in the classroom, one of the greatest frustrations I had. That I'd like to hear your thoughts on was how to get, and it's, and it's a huge question, and I'm not. Expecting a, a silver bullet, but. To get the, the home environment, the, 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 the guardians or parents of the kids in the school system. The involvement that is so critical to. Um, student experience in, in the classroom, in, in the building. Uh. Like, like I said, that's.
And while, while you think about this question, I would encourage you to think about it in your role as a school board member, not as a professor.
Sure. That's helpful. Yeah. Um.
I'm thinking of time.
Staying in my, all right. Yes. Yeah. So we could go through some literature. Um. You know, I think, um, from, from the school board side, uh, you know, I think the focus is on making sure that parents know. The different ways that they are welcome in the school and making sure that they understand ways in which they can be, uh, in, involved. So, you know, as examples of making sure that when we have the after-school clubs that we run at Waddell. That everyone knows that they're welcome to either create their own, or maybe it's, oh, you could be a helper, because maybe it's a little too daunting to take on the task of, I'm going to. Wrangle eight elementary school students to learn more about Spanish, but I could help. So I think, you know, I took it a while ago or something. Um, and, you know, and I think, you know, with the growth of these electives at the middle school, in fact, those, they'll be growing more. This coming year, and again, credit to, um. Uh, Abbot Kisi as well as, uh, the central administration, uh, for looking at creative scheduling, uh, options to allow more students to take elective. So there'll be more students taking electives, which again, I think, connecting to the CTE program that we have an excellent CTE program at the high school. Um, so I think it's, it's great to sort of help, uh, students find different ways to be. Have sort of that belonging in the same way that we're talking about having, uh, parents, but, you know, a lot of it is to me about information, providing avenues. Um, that, that make it feel accessible, right? That it's not this intimidating place to, to step into. But instead it's like, oh yeah, and you can come here and you can help in this little way, because different people, uh, have different commitments. And so I think honoring that as well, and the times of day that they're able to potentially help is going to, it's going to vary as well.
Tim, one last question. Um. This is, uh, comes from the voice of, uh, Levert Taylor. Uh, what would you do to promote, uh, minority hiring?
So, um, you know, they have. They, we, um, you know. Heard, um, you know. The folks who came and spoke, um, uh, and lots of different voices who came and, and we did implement, um. You know, some new practices to try. Um, so for example, which job fairs are we going to, uh, across the state? Right? And making sure we're going to HBCUs at, for example. Uh, making sure that we're reaching out directly to education departments throughout the state, again, and particularly, uh, diverse, uh, universities. Uh, so that they know, uh, about the options. I mean, there are, um, you know, and advertising other. Um, you know, supports such as the Irma Thompson Fund, right, that are available. And so making sure that we're, you know, partnering in that way that, that. And so, you know, we've worked up and sort of are advertising that it is, um, you know, very challenging.
That doesn't mean, uh, baseball is really tough, but you keep swinging.
Right. And so I mean, I think there has been, I mean, one thing, again, that'd be something I'd be proud of. It was, was standardizing, okay, if we have an opening, what do we do? And making sure that for every opening, we're going through and notifying all these different. Schools and areas, right? Because I think there is something to a given school being like, oh yeah, that they do reach out. And so are, you know, maybe over, if we do that for several years, they'll see it's a consistent effort, not just this. Cheap little effort to try to score a point or something, but it, we're actually being intentional and deliberate and consistent about that. So I think, um. Taking on those practices.
Great. Thank you very much. And, uh, we'll look forward to rendering a decision on, uh, June 16th.
Thank you for your consideration.
Certainly. Tammy Dunn, come on down. And, uh, you don't have to remember what the question was. Uh, we'll let Mr. Alligood start.
Any opening comments? Uh, the reason I'm a native of Lexington, Tammy Dunn, five eleven Maury Street. Uh, native of Lexington, went through like city schools, um, me and my siblings, my daughter went through Lexington City Schools. Um, I decided to run a, submit my application again because I feel like I missed a whole. Lot of my first, um. Year, well, because I was appointed in July, COVID came in March, school shut down, things just happened. Then when we came, returned to school. It was, um, four days, still mass. So it was great when the kids were able to show their little smiling faces. And I, I feel like my experience. In the city, um, I've worked for the city for 32 years. I've worked with lots of city, uh, kids. I've worked with lots of families and I think the families actually feel more comfortable knowing. That I am their voice, that I will speak for them, that I will make sure, you, you understand what I'm saying, that everything. Will be okay. Um, so yes, that, those are two of the main reasons why I submitted my application again.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Alligood.
Same question.
Yes, sir.
What it was.
Test performance.
Yes.
Uh, did it drop in your opinion in the school and part two was what can we do to recover?
Well, like, uh, Mr. Dietz said, that. Whenever you're looking at statistics, it can be kind of skewed a little bit. Um, we know from COVID. Um, yes, because of COVID, I will agree that some of our, uh, children slid. Um, I worked. One-on-one with four families for six weeks and I could, virtual was just not. Happening for a lot of kids. And so they were either not grasping it or not turning in their work and. And all of that, but once they got back to school full-time. You know, I, I could see improvement, uh, in the after-school program, especially with the kids, that's my experience in after-school program. I could see them starting to improve, you know, with report cards and. So in all the report cards, I see the kids are very proud to show them, they were great. Um, not a lot of failures, uh, worked with a couple of middle schoolers that came over just to do homework and get help with homework. Teachers were very pleased with their progress and their independence. So things just kind of started rolling again for them. And how to prove it is just, you know, with the breakout groups and monitoring. What kids are struggling, where they're struggling, get some services and some people in there to help them. I helped them as much as I can on my end. I have a great relationship with Washington and Lee. So I get if somebody's there every single day that can help these kids. And it, it's just. Home, it, it, home is a big issue. How to improve that? I don't know. But just, um, and that's why a lot of parents will say, if you can help them with their homework, that would be great. Because I can't help them when they get home. Now, we did away with a lot of homework, but they're still reading, they're still studying for spelling tests. And there's still some math stuff that goes on and a lot of times. It's not happening at home. One, the parents really don't know how to do some of the new math. I don't know how to do some of the new math. I have, Google's my best friend when it comes to that, because it's, it's, it's just way above my, uh, my level of learning.
What's an area of focus you'd like to, what would you like to focus on in your next term on school board?
My next term on school board, I would like to focus on, one thing is being more transparent, two, to community, to the parents, which goes hand in hand. With making them feel welcome. Um, you, you've got a lot of parents. I've heard it before, we don't, not that we don't feel welcome, but. I just don't bother or whatever. So getting them to understand the importance of them being in school, going to their performances. Fifth grade graduation was a prime example. There was a fifth grader, nobody was there for him. It's a big deal. He locked eyes with me and he saw I was there. So I think that made a big difference to him, just to know that I was there. Um, but just to get these parents to understand how important school is in, in the functions and, um. Attending their programs, even if it is something that they don't like, that's what you sign up to do as a parent. So being more transparent and just keeping the kids happy and to the, and learning.
So Tammy, uh, you can be brief, you don't have, you know, uh, but, but essentially, uh. Your, your thoughts on an SRO, your top three goals, and if an SRO is one of them, uh.
Um, top three goals are headed here, but it went there. Uh, but with the SRO, um. What Chief Green was talking about, the prison to pipeline. I see SRO as being a little more than just, uh, a police officer. Um, like this kid that had nobody at graduation, you know. That the, an SOR officer could be somebody that he could be friend. So it, it goes a little deeper and it, it, it's a little wider than just policing. You know, teachers don't have time, that's obvious. They don't have time to. Talk to little Johnny that's having some issues. The principals don't have time. Guidance counselors truly don't have time with. The incidence of behaviors now, um, I don't know if y'all know, but kids are different. So that S R, very different, that SRO officer could be that person. So. Yes, I know it's a costly thing, but if we can work it out to where it's grant funded and I think that would be a great benefit. For the schools, just to be that extra as ears, voice, um, somebody that cares. Uh, and it's got, like she was saying, it's got to be the right fit. For that position. Top three goals, uh, I'll tell you, I had them, but they just. Um, one is, is, is to, um. The transparency, two is, um, retention of our great teachers that we have. And the third one is just to keep. Things here, hopefully COVID is a thing of the past and we can keep the kids learning and happy.
Uh, in your first term, there, possibly is something that you're quite proud of, an accomplishment. Uh, that the school has made. Do you have?
I think getting through COVID successfully was a big thing, you know, some of the meetings were. Very grueling and very hard to sit through. And just the fact that. The teachers, you know, they kept their composure, everybody kept their composure. And they were very thankful and grateful for everything we did for them. And. Just that whole process. It was, it was, it was very hard, but we came out ahead of the game because everybody got back in school and everybody was fine.
Um, so a question about elected school board, uh, members, do you think moving to an elected? The school board would be a good thing or a bad thing? Any thoughts on that?
I think it will be a good thing for somebody that has the time to campaign and do all of that stuff. Um, I don't have a feeling either way. I just feel like I would not be, um, here if I had to go. Through that election process. I'm here because I care, you know what I mean? Because I have it in my heart for kids and their success. And I don't think, um. I don't know, either way would be fine, but I think we may would lose a lot of, uh, good qualified voices. If we move to elected school boards.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Smith.
I, I think you answered my question when you answered. Leslie's question.
Okay.
Uh, what would you do to promote, uh, minority employees? The hiring of minority employees.
We have tried, I think, um. There's a lot more to that than just, I think it's a community thing as well. I don't think it's just a school issue. Um, I think it's a community issue. You know, people here see, and that's a big reflection and people don't want to come here. Um. We've had this discussion with the W N L group, um. You know, when you walk downtown, you have nowhere to go, nowhere to shop and it's really, it's, there's nothing here to really draw. The, the minority group. Um, and if I'm being honest, this is a big issue as well. Money is, is, is a big issue, uh. Comparably to, to our locality, you know, we're good, but if they're looking to come and make a lot of money and be. Happy with what goes on in the community thing. Yeah, but I think it's more of a community, it's a community issue as well.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Buddy.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you all for your support.
Absolutely. Thank you for applying. Mary Beth. Come on down. And welcome your introduction. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Mary Beth Mandrovic. I'm at nine hundred Providence Place in Lexington. Um, I come here today first and foremost as a parent. I have three daughters who are now in, um, both of the Lexington City Schools. This next year, um, and I, I want to. For myself and for them, I want to make sure that I'm doing everything I can for them and for their education as a parent. This last, the la- I, I'm not a long-term resident of Lexington. We moved here in 2017 when I was appointed a position at V M I. Um, immediately fell in love with it and we are hoping that it is going to be our forever home. Because of that, I, I find that this is the time where I really want to start investing in my community, more so than just as a volunteer and, um, as an observer. I previously thought the way to do that was to become an active member at school board meetings where I would, um. Go and voice my concerns. And unfortunately, I realized very quickly that, that was not the, um, most effective way of. Making my voice heard. I realized very quickly that, um, it was a. School board that was different than any other place I've ever lived at. Um, we came from, um. An area of Chicago where it was always elected school board positions. I've actually never lived in any place that didn't have elected school board positions. Um, and I was, I, I guess I was a, a bit shocked at the, the, the. Um, and I was, I I guess I was a a bit shocked at the 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 system. Um, and I was very frustrated, especially through COVID. So those frustrations led me to um. Write letters, state my piece and um. Not being able to do anything further, I am now before you as a applicant. So with that, I guess I will. I'll let you ask questions.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Mr. Allagood.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
The system uh, locally test every year and the the governor had. Come out with a report recently about uh, test scores. Declining. Uh, what's your sense of that and part two? Uh, i- if you agree with that premise, uh, what could we do to recover?
Um, personally, I absolutely think that um, unfortunately, test scores and. Um, academics are declining. I teach um, at V M I, I teach incoming freshmen. And we were hoping that it was, we we've been saying, yes, we've been seeing a decline in their performance. Everybody's saying it's hopefully just COVID. Unfortunately, I think it's a lot more than COVID. I think that um, it speaks to a a bigger issue of. Um, what Ms. Dunn actually mentioned of um, teachers not being able to. Have the time and the um. Teaching has sometimes not become the primary goal of a teacher. And unfortunately, their time is spent in other aspects such as disciplinary aspects and things that take away from. Teaching. And I think that that along with um, the mental health crisis that we are seeing. That it has been going on since COVID, but um. Is exacerbated was really was it just exacerbated by COVID? I think that that has to be addressed as well. And so I think those kind of. Um, combined are are definitely affecting test performance. Um, I also think that. That there is a, let me say this politely. Um, I think that. After COVID, we have, we we kind of cut back to so many things during COVID. That I don't think we bounced back. I don't, but I don't know if we're going to bounce back. I say this because I see this in a lot of more, much more than just the school board or. Uh, the school system, but I feel like a lot of things changed during COVID. And we are reluctant to get back to where we were. I think that we've kind of set a new standard and unfortunately it is not a a higher standard. Um, so I do think that test performance is a reflection of COVID, but it's also a reflection of a a greater problem. So I think that we need to to. Find a way to better support our teachers and um. And whether that is just, you know, from a disciplinary um, and and help them get back to. Teaching, teaching material, teaching um, what they know, what they're there to do, what they are driven to do. Take away a lot of the additional um. Things that they have been challenged over the last few years and really focus back on teaching.
Thanks for being here, Mary Beth. What's an area you'd like to focus on during your term on school board?
So it's interesting that um, that this this I have kind of had the same answer to that is the transparency. Um, but I say this on the opposite side, as the parent that would go to the school board meetings. That would ask questions and never receive a answer, that would write letters and never receive a response. That um, I was told, well, I should go directly to the Virginia Department of Education. Or I I should contact the P T A because they'll be able to answer my questions. Um, it was a really frustrating time as a parent and the fact that we have no. Ability to discuss things with the school board or to. Ask why they do things, ask what their decision was based on. That was really frustrating as a parent, as a s- um, a professor, as all the, as a scientist, it was. It was a very challenging time. Um, and I. Why I say I I'm glad that everybody says we want more transparency. Um, I was just on the opposite end of it and it is sorely needed because. The parents were frustrated. There was absolutely no discussion and um, and decisions were being made. That we weren't, we weren't, really were not aware as to why. Um, so I think just more discussion, more transparency would be my my answer to that. Thank you.
So uh, my turn, uh, kind of your top three goals, can be brief and kind of hit on the SRO issue, if you would, please. If that's one of your, would be one of your goals.
I think it would be because I think my top goal is um, we have a mental health crisis in this country that we are not addressing COVID. Um, just like I said earlier, COVID just exacerbated it. I think that that is something that we need to address. Um, we need to address it in multiple ways and I think an SRO officer would also be fall under that. I think an SRO officer would. Would not only help that aspect of it being a um, a person that had, does. You know, another eyes on the ground and somebody that students can go to to talk to and to confide in. But also I think it would help a lot of the parents and the the um. How scared we are as parents with the tragedies that had continued to unfold. I think that that would be a. Um, way for parents to say, yes, the school is, does realize that this is an issue. Um, safety of our students is the primary concern from both a physical safety and a mental health perspective. Um, so those would be, and and also going back to. Finding out what the teachers really need to do their jobs because I just feel like that they have um. We have gone, we have somewhat gone away from listening to teachers, listening to parents.
Thank you.
I have to form my question a little bit differently.
Sure.
Um. I'm sorry that you've felt this frustration since you've been in a, working with the Lexington City Schools in as a parent. But would there be something that has been an accomplishment that you you felt that? Oh, that was a great thing that the schools did. Would you be able to share that?
Um. Let's see. Now, I I want to to preface this question with, my frustrations. Are still pale in comparison to the school system and what we've received for the. The everybody that we have interacted with, um, this, the schools are amazing. We actually. We we moved from the county to the city because of the school system was was one very large portion of that. Um, what I would say is kind of to 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 um. Go off of of some of the things that got brought up before with some of the activities and the extracurriculars and the. Um, enrichment that students, because again, that I think that really does speak to. The mental health of our students. If students are excited to learn and have having fun learning, they don't realize they're learning. So I think that incorporating more active learning, more outside and learning, more um, of those kind of. Outside the box thinking. Um, I think that that really gets to. Getting kids excited about learning. And I think when kids are excited about learning, they, like I said, they want to learn or they don't realize they're learning. Um, so I would say that I I really appreciate all of the extracurriculars and um. And the outside learning environments, the new tents, all of that. I I I'm a, I bought biologist, so learning in nature is um. Is is really important to me. So I'm I'm really happy about that.
Um, I think I know your answer to this. I think so. So if you could maybe elaborate on the pros and cons of elected versus appointed. The school board members and and that would be helpful.
Sure. Um, yes, I am actually, I I am for an elected school board. Um, honestly, just that that I I've never seen it done in any way else. And um, although it does have flashbacks to. You know, high school elections and and that kind of thing for me, but um, I think that an elected, I I've heard the. People the the that are on the con side saying that an elected position would make it too political. I don't know if we can get away from being political in today's society, whether or not we're elected, whether or not we're not elected. I mean, you, it. It's it's a, the political arena is just kind of everywhere. Um. So I think that 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 as a a con to having an elected position should be ignored because, no offense, I think. Even had not having an elected position is still a political um, political sides. I think that an elected position, I I don't know if I agree with um. With Mr. D and Mrs. Dunn, Miss Dunn, that um, maybe I wouldn't run if I had to go through an election process and and put all the time and effort and energy into that. I I think I would because I am very passionate about things and when I get my head on, you know, and an idea, I'd like to see it through and um. I I think it would allow the public and the parents, again, these, the school board represents the parents. I think it would allow the parents a voice and it would allow the parents to ask questions of people who are going to potentially. Be making these huge decisions for their children. And I think it it will give the parents and the public an a a voice to say, who do they want to represent and to um. To really lead, lead the school board.
I don't, I don't know if you can answer um, my question. I don't know how to really ask it differently. Um, but the 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 middle schoolers that I had. You know, that needed parental and 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 home support the most really got it the least. So how, what are your ideas? Exactly. Um, and it was, it was frustrating for everybody involved. Um. So I'd like to hear your thoughts or ideas on, you know, how to incentivize or. Get better home and parent support for the kids in the school that that really needed the most to to help address what Mr. Allagood was was.
Right. That is a challenge. I mean, it it's a challenge all around. Um, the students who do tend to do best to have parents that are involved. Um, eh, you can take a many other things out of the equation and that is always tends to be a constant is the parent involvement. Um, again, I think one of the ways is to make the school board more. Um. Amenable to parental involvement. I think that. If there's no, I I know that personally after after going down the. The route that I was trying to get answers and get question, you know, and not getting anywhere, I kind of gave up. I realized that there was, you know, I can, I would go and I'd follow the minutes and I'd watch the Zoom meetings. Um, but I knew that I didn't have a voice there. So I think if we can. Encourage parental involvement even at the, at the school board level at the um, in activities and. And and again, and I also think it goes back to. If the students are really excited about learning, that will also translate back to the parents. If they come home and say, oh, I learned, you know, I I was really excited about something. That can also translate back and and get parents involved. But I really think that having a place that if parents say, you know, we need help, what can we do? Or um, you know, we need after school assistance, what can we do? Giving parents that option. Um, is I think the first step to getting parents more involved.
And finally, my question is, what would you do to promote minority hiring?
It's a challenge. That is a challenge. Um. Mine is more of a a long-term goal, I guess you could say. Um. Because I think anybody who lives here. I shouldn't say anybody, majority of people who live in this town absolutely love this town. And I know people who have have grown up and they specifically came back and they moved back here to work in this town. I think we make this town a place where all, as was, we're always trying to do, we're all are welcome. And we. Encourage and and better support and better um. Help students, minority students go to college so that when they are educators themselves, they come back here. And they want to come back here and reinvest in their community. So I think, you know, and obviously, like I said, that's a long-term goal. But um, in the short term, it would be similar things, um, you know, really. Advertising more and um, and and trying to get additional um. You know, tell, really explain to people that this town is not what the news makes it out to be. But my long-term goal would be to try to invest in our students so that they want to come back here and reinvest themselves.
Excellent. Thank you again for uh, being with us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Reconvene on the sixteenth. Um, thank you for uh, sitting through the other uh, public hearings. Um, and thank you all for uh, being here and being willing to present yourselves and bring your um, ideas forward. For consideration to the school board. Certainly, our city is much better off because of. The commitment and desires that you all have to make our fantastic school system that much better. Um, and I I sit here as a um, former school board member and uh, Mr. Smith had a nerve for me because. I remember um, going through some of the Virginia School Board Association training. And learning about um, a a division that was, that implemented a program called the Compact Program. And one of my uh, disappointments as a school board member was not getting Lexington on board with this idea. And the idea is incredibly simple. When parents show up with their kindergartner, they're fired up. They are excited and want to know what can they do to help their child be the best they can be. And at that moment, having a a list, a checklist of things. That not every parent knows they need to do with their child to help them be successful. Whether it be um, uh, craft time, whether it be reading with them, making sure that they have a warm meal and. It's a, the list go is long, but it was a compact that the uh, parent and the teacher each would sign. Was not a contract, but a compact. And it gave expectations for parental support and involvement. When you started in kindergarten, people were looking forward in first grade. And in second grade and so on. And it was a additional step that the teachers had to do collaboratively in that school division. And they started seeing much greater success in parent uh, involvement. Because it was specific to making sure that Maggie Friedman was going to be best she could be in kindergarten and uh, so on. So. Sorry for the diatribe, but as I said, you struck struck a nerve and I uh, encourage our school board to um. Uh, seek out that idea because it's a small thing, uh, helping parents. Uh, I also observed that um, when you bring your third child to kindergarten, you're looking for the compact, but you're like, yes, I, here, just take them. Uh, but that's a different story. Um, uh, for council's benefit, I contacted Casey to let her know that um, since she was out of town, not able to be with us. Um, that members of council, uh, she could watch this. Uh, replay and that uh, you all were available for her to reach out and in contact. So you may be hearing from her. But again, thank you all very much for your thoughtful responses, support of our children and our school system. The next item on our agenda is consideration of minutes. From the uh, May meeting. And unless there are any objections, we will approve those as presented. See no objections. Uh, next is citizens' remarks and comments. Uh, would invite, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Dr. Ramey. I I have the sense that the fun is just about to begin.
Yeah, right. Uh, good job on the spots with thing, by the way. Patrick Ramey, one ten White Street. Um, as regards the forthcoming appointments to the city school board. I'm speaking to encourage you to consider a diversity in backgrounds, perspectives and affiliations. Which is lacking in the current board's composition. If the benefit of appointments is getting a broad set of voices at the table, you're not doing a very good job. A majority of the current board has a household affiliation with not only Washington and Lee University. But narrowly, the Williams School within Washington and Lee University. Appointing a majority of the board with a household affiliation with one school within one university is fairly absurd. Further, forty percent of your board are not only associated with one school in one university. But come from one department within one school within one university. I implore you to consider some diversity of perspectives and affiliations that better reflect our community in your coming appointments. While some overlap in affiliations is inevitable in such a small town. Uh, as council's membership reflects. Washington Lee is not even the largest employer. Having a diversity of perspectives that represent different views is important to policy decisions that the school makes that affect our children. It could be assessing educational needs. The timing of breaks or teacher workdays. Or simply having some greater economic diversity to understand the challenges parents may face. Faculty in economics and business administration are some of the best paid faculty at Washington Lee. Which is the highest paying large employer in town. Not only is the majority of your school board narrowly affiliated, but they are some of the most privileged members of the community as well. This privilege is reflected in recent, my opinion, in recent decisions like eliminating parent teacher conferences. Which disproportionately harms struggling students from disadvantaged backgrounds. That's one of the ways how you let parents know when they can be helpful, welcome, accessible. And provide transparent information. Further, it is always good, whether school board or city council. To have some new fresh perspectives rather than having the same people on these bodies year after year. to have some new fresh perspectives rather than having the same people on these bodies year after year. Now sadly, I'll be honest, because you know, I often am. I expect the worst. To quote Leonard Cohen, everybody knows that the dice are loaded and everybody rolls with their fingers crossed. Three of six of you also have household affiliations with Washington and Lee. And in particular, Leslie Spouse serves as the dean of the Williams School, from which the controlling majority on the school board hails. Now, I'm not suggesting there's anything untoward or conflicting here, but we're talking about such a narrow subset of the community, incredibly narrow subset of the community. So I can encourage you to consider appointing members of the school board that better reflect our broader community rather than simply choosing to reappoint coworkers or friends from narrow social and professional circles. That is how you bridge and better understand concerns in the community. So with that, I ask you in your next meeting, which I will not be here for, I like to take three years between attending meetings. Please appoint Mary Beth and Tammy to the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramey. Are there other members of the public that would like to speak? Mr. Reed.
Thanks for listening to me. I think the most important question that came from the the council today, and it's a it's a bias, I know, because I'm part of a group of people that wants to have our school board elected as opposed to appointed. But I believe that that was the most important question. And I think you have to agree with me when you hear the responses from the people that had to answer the question. We had two people who ultimately said that they wouldn't be here if they had to, they wouldn't be on the school board if they had to run for the school board. And you had one applicant who wholeheartedly agrees that you should be elected to the to the position. Now, like I said, I have a bias, but when you have a candidate in front of you asking to be appointed who isn't already on the school board, who stands in front of you and says that as a parent, she didn't feel like she was being listened to by the people on the school board, I think that's pretty revealing. Speaking from the perspective of somebody who's been knocking on doors and talking to people for months now, gathering signatures about halfway toward a goal of five hundred. The people that are leading this effort to have an elected school board come from the same perspective, and they are getting signatures from currently about two hundred people that feel the same way. And if you if you talk about the political aspect of it, because like Mary Beth said, really, everything is political. And that's an unavoidable fact, whether or not we like it in 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 school issues, school board issues, city constitutions, really, it is political. We we and and that's imperfect, but it is a reality. We have people on both sides of the political equation that are leading this effort to have an elected school board. In fact, the people on on the, I'm not the leader and I didn't start this petition to have an elected school board. It came from people on the other side. If if you say that I'm right leaning, the 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 people who led this and organized this and promote this came from the left, and they are the ones who started and led and continue to to promote this this situation. So I would have to add my endorsement for what it's worth, and at the risk of really ruining it, I would have to add my add my endorsement to Mary Beth and also to Tammy. I don't think that we need to see the same thing that we've already seen, and I think that's echoed by a significant part of our population in an effort that hasn't even finished yet. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for being with Mr. Reed and sharing your insights. Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, I will close the citizens' remarks and comments and move into reports and commissions. Blue Ridge Resource Authority, Mr. Smith.
DQ is coming by next week for an inspection to issue a certificate to operate cell two. Anticipate no problems with that. So hopefully, when that certificate is issued, we'll be able to start taking solid waste into cell two. Questions?
You all should be a little more excited about that. It's big news. Thank you for the trash talking, Mr. Smith. Main Street Lexington, Ms. Strong.
Well, it's almost here. Rock the Bridge is Saturday, June eleventh from five thirty to ten, ten o'clock PM. So come dance the night away with live music from the late night Stumblers and Tony Cam and the Funk All Stars. Enjoy local food vendors, ice cold beverages, and a chance to win a raffle prize. The raffle prize is donated by downtown merchants. It's ten dollars submission, twelve and under are free. So hope to see you at the bridge.
Thank you, ma'am.
Will there be a dunking tank?
I hope so. We'll take nominations for who'll be in there.
Candidates for
Vice Mayor.
Yeah. Planning Commission, Ms. Strong.
Planning Commission met on Thursday, May twenty sixth in the as you heard in the work session today, commission made their recommendations on the Washington Lee Master Plan. Essentially, they approved all items except for those related to the Institutional History Museum and Parking Garage. They determined more information was needed for those projects, and this will become to council at our June sixteenth meeting. We continued our discussion on the zoning ordinance amendment for planned unit developments for mixed use. And staff noted that they renewed a site plan for eight Tesla charging stations at Sheets. Also, Jamie Gooden's term expires at the end of the month, and he is not seeking reappointment. This leaves an opening on the commission, and I'd like to give a big thank you to Jamie for serving as chair this past year and for his excellent work on the planning commission. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strong. Hope people take note. We're blessed with four people that have applied for a position, two positions on the school board. We will advertise and look to fill Jamie's position, but sometimes finding folks with the represent diversity makes it a little bit tough to get those folks to appoint to different boards and commissions. So spread the word on the opening and we'll look forward to having a a strong, solid planning commission. Regional Tourism Board, Mr. Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tourism Board next meets on Wednesday, June eighth, and Leslie has already put in a plug for Rock the Bridge, but I do have a couple of things to mention. First, this might be of interest to Chuck. The outdoor yoga at Great Valley Farm Brewery and Winery is tonight from five thirty to six thirty and every Thursday for the remainder of the month. So you can join Center of Gravity Yoga and Pilates for an outdoor yoga class on the hill overlooking the Blue Ridge Mountains every Thursday at five thirty, and afterwards you can enjoy a glass of wine, and that's ten dollars cash or check. The other thing to mention is tomorrow, Friday's Alive has S J McDonald at Davidson Park. You might remember she's a Rockbridge County native who was also an American Idol contestant, and she's a hometown hero. She'll be there from six to nine, and it's free. And there's a National Trails Day Scavenger Hunt on the Chessey Trail, Saturday, June fourth, from twelve to two, and you will meet at the Mill Creek Kiosk on the trail. And that is everything I have.
Where is that kiosk?
It's the Mill Creek Kiosk, and I think that's the one when at the start of the Chessey Trail, you know, there's the new kiosk that was built. I think that's what that is.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
I think the yoga class might have been canceled because of the weather this evening.
Oh, really? Oh, okay. Well, that then the next to tonight, it was canceled, but 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 they will, it's every every Thursday for the remainder of the month.
I'll I'll see you there, Dennis. But related to the 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 trail day, also at Natural Bridge, they're having a trail marathon to do all four of the trails there. I think it totals nine miles. And if you complete the circuit, you get some sort of some sort of prize. Jim Jones didn't elaborate on that, but also related, Natural Bridge was Friends of Natural Bridge was awarded a grant for putting in baskets for the disc golf course that that is being being put in out there. So just a little bit of positive regional regional news in in the outdoor arena.
Fantastic. Good stuff going on. Raro, Mr. Sigler.
The Raro Board of Directors met last night at the Jordan's Point Pavilion. We did not have a quorum, so we couldn't take any action on anything, but we did get updates on a lot of our programs kind of as we wrap up the spring. And things went really well with both baseball and softball. Softball was a great end of the year with that tournament, SVU, I may have mentioned to everyone. Baseball went really well, and pickleball, we've wrapped up the open court play that that has been occurring at Moory River Middle School that concluded yesterday. But now we're going to be playing at Rivermont starting June eighth. So there continues to be interest in pickleball. It's been a good addition. And so that's 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 exciting. I mean, the it's it's open to, you know, everyone. But then adult softball is something that has been re reignited with with Raro's involvement. We've always had some adult softball locally, but we have eight teams, eight total teams playing. The standings are up to date on the website. But they're playing at Rivermont in Glasgow and at Brubaker Field. And so if you happen by, you know, you know, Brubaker, for example, if you see the lights on one night, you might roll up there and see some of our adult softball teams playing. And so those teams are 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 having a good time, and and it's been a great addition. But we're also already thinking about fall. And to get ready for fall, you know, we're we're starting some clinics. We're thinking about clinics to keep kids engaged, and we're doing clinics all summer long, actually, not just for softball, I mean, not just for soccer as we get ready for fall. But one thing that we've done with our staff, because we've got some great staff members with expertise in baseball and softball during the during the workday, typically, you know, we've got our programs are after school. Well, summer, you know, there's not not school, and if there happens to be kids that are looking for an activity during the during the day, we're doing some clinics in the morning before it gets too hot on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we're going to alternate between Lexington and Buena Vista for kids to sort of drop in if they have time for for an hour based on their age group for to participate in a baseball clinic or a softball clinic, kind of some focused skill work put on by our Raro staff. And so that's again, making good use of the talent that we have on on staff and the facilities. And if we happen to get five kids, ten kids, or twenty kids, they're getting exposure to softball, baseball, and athletic activity that they otherwise would not be getting. So some great additions by the staff that we continue to be very excited about. And basketball, we're not going to leave basketball out. We're going to be doing some outdoor basketball clinics also during the summertime, and they're going to start next week on Mondays and Wednesdays. And so all of this information, the times, the locations are on our website. If families are are interested in in taking up the Raro staff on some of these offerings.
The outdoor basketball, where would that be?
So Brew Baker is where we're considering it right now. I mean, that's the goal. We just resurfaced that basketball court. And so that's the that is the thought right now is of where that would be. Luckily, there's some shade there also if it gets too hot, but that that's where we're planning to have it.
Terrific. Thank you, David. Any questions on the Raro? Glad to have children of all ages up and moving and keeping active. Threshold, Ms. Alexander.
Yes, Threshold had a meeting last Wednesday, but it was basically a workshop that we promised that we would continue having these educational sessions with the planning commission and the general public, if they wish. And we had two representatives from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and they talked about initiatives that they are currently managing and promoting in Virginia. And I have two pages of notes, but I will not go through all of that. But some of the competitive grants that they have are in regard to housing rehab, community development, public infrastructure, service facilities, scattered rehab, public service, local innovation, economic development, something that's construction ready for water and sewer and water and wastewater grants. For their housing grants, they do two rounds of grant applications per year, and nine point seven million dollars were awarded last year, but most recently they had an application period that had an April deadline. Some of the local assistance that they've awarded funds to have been in Buena Vista, where they awarded a million dollars last year for infrastructure design and development. Rockbridge County for housing reproduction and housing rehab habitat for the work on Greenhouse Road and RCHS helping with to get the twelve habitat houses built and some road work. The McLaughlin Street property also has has or is being considered for some assistance through the Industrial Revitalization Fund, which would be deteriorated property with commercial past and a commercial future. And they wanted to reiterate that they are very flexible because they have a very opportunistic grant group who are making the selections, and it has a quick application turnaround. They are looking for also for projects that had economic hardship because of COVID or if it fits a COVID situation. For instance, a building that may have housed a retail establishment that closed because of COVID, it's still empty. So it's possible that people can get funding for rehabbing something like that to turn it into something else that's retail related. And a big plus for Lexington is that they said that we're because we're near the interstate. They have funding for undervalued properties renovation with a grant called Acquire, Renovate, and Sell, where they sell a property at the market rate, return the funding that that you'd be provided, but keep the net for the owner. And the forty five thousand dollar limit is the limit for that grant. And there are other grants that you may have heard of because TAP has done work here locally for plumbing, emergency home repair, accessibility repairs, and weatherization. So we're a little bit familiar with the TAP program where they get their grants from the same agency. The representatives encouraged Lexington to consider private and public sector partnerships and with the tax credit programs to make opportunities available for projects. They added that when you enter into an agreement with a developer, the key is to know the outcome of your project, to know which program that really will benefit the project and the community the most. They said Lexington is a step ahead by virtue of the fact that we scheduled the educational sessions and and that Lexington has a great sense of place, and they look at things like that. They would like to see us figure out what we can do as a community, and they would like to return to Lexington to talk once we have a vision. They said there was no reason for Lexington not to pursue these funds, but they want us to think through a strategy and move forward. So that was their request to us. That I, some of you all were involved, but did you hear basically the same thing that
You did a super job summarizing. There was a lot of information, and it was good to for us to hear what's available and for them to hear what some of our needs are so that they can look to see what what's a good match.
It was actually very encouraging. We just need some people that want that money to do something.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Alexander? Yes, sir. Mr. Alligan.
You said that RCHS built twelve habitat houses?
I don't know about twelve, but that's what they said. But I know they've built some, but maybe over the long term, they've done twelve. I'm not sure.
I think they have. It's probably been about twelve years. They do it, and they do roughly one a year.
I see. So I was thinking it was quicker than that.
Yeah, cumulative.
But it's fantastic that But it's fantastic that they're building it all.
Um, it's fantastic and, um, what's Kirk's last name?
Bennett.
Bennett, uh, has been overseeing that and working with, um, uh, children at the high school to, uh, create and deliver, uh, one of these a year. And it's neat to see the finished product and the pride that they take in their, uh, association with making that happen.
I've been in one of them a while back and was impressed then with, uh, what the students were doing under his leadership.
Exactly. A lot of good things going on in our community. Um, thank you, Ms. Alexander. Uh, Maury Service Authority, Mr. Allagood.
My turn. Uh, Maury Service Authority met and you'll be happy to know that, the, all the paperwork has been submitted and we don't have any feedback yet. Uh, there are a couple of workshops that are in the process of being scheduled. One for this month, I don't have the dates, not scheduled yet. And the purpose of this new workshop is to begin the discussion and hear the report from the consultants on the, uh, cost and the project for modernizing the wastewater treatment plant. The others, uh, the original workshops were done for the water plant. The drinking water plant, now they're moving ahead and still back of the envelope estimates is still that horrendous number, uh, that's floating around of twenty million for one and thirty million for the other. Uh, thirty million is for the wastewater modernization. That'll be split, but still it's a lot of money, uh, that we get to pay for. End of report.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Allagood? So continue to watch your wallet, right?
Right.
Very good. Uh, for the mayor's reports, um, I, uh, have a couple of items. Um, one, I want to say thank you to council for your thoughtful questions for the school board applicants. As usual, it's wonderful to have four, um, would love to have more and more diversity with the, uh, applications. And, um, hope that we will see that as we, we move forward. Um, for the public's information, um, city council, as is, uh, contractually, um, required with the city manager, we completed his review in the, uh, past two weeks and it was a positive review. And lastly, uh, Board of Equalization, we need to, um, make some appointments. I spoke with Karen Roundy today to get some, um, further details and guidance. At our last, uh, appointments in two thousand nineteen of the Board of Equalization, uh, we had Bob Lira, Jim Joyner and our very own Mr. Allagood. And when I phoned, uh, Bob Lira today, he, um, I, I think his words were, I'm too old. Um, he's having some, uh, health, some issues with his back and not getting around that great. And he said he didn't think he would be able to provide, uh, good service to the community. Uh, but he did want to point out that he was disappointed that, um, he and Jim had, uh, discussed that they likely would not participate uh, in this year for reappointment and that, uh, Mr. Allagood would be the chair of the, uh, coming. And then he ran for city council and could not be considered. So, uh, Bob asked me to, uh, remind you of that commitment that you broke.
Yeah, Bob, I'm sorry.
Will do, will do. Um, I have some names to, uh, contact, uh, for this role. It's a unique role that, um, uh, it's been suggested by Karen and by, uh, past members of of this, uh, board. Someone with a legal background and a real estate background. Uh, Bob also opined that, um, no Realtor would come within, uh, ten feet of this, um, appointment. Uh, because of the anxieties that can come along with people's, um, angst with the, um, values and in contesting. So I've got, uh, six names of people that I anticipate, um, uh, contacting and seeing if they will be willing to be considered. And, um, uh, moving, move forward to bring that to you, uh, next month. There's about a, uh, two to four hour training session that Karen puts folks through. You no longer have to go to Richmond. It can be done via Zoom and City Hall. And, uh, for your time, you are compensated at fifteen dollars an hour. So, correct, correct. Um, so hopefully that fifteen dollars an hour will entice some people to, uh, either volunteer or accept the, uh, to be considered for that appointment. Um, but wanted to express, uh, uh, deep appreciation from me personally and from all of council, uh, to Bob Lira, Jim Joyner and to Mr. Allagood for their service in the past. Um, sorry that none of them are willing or able to, uh, serve and we will get a, a good crew for this next appointment for your consideration. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, uh, of course, continue to accept applications for the position of DPW Director. We have not filled that position. Uh, initial review of candidates has occurred. However, no decisions to make a hire is immediately forthcoming. And we would be pleased to accept any applications or any interest in that position. Um, we're watching the DORA license, the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area License. That application is in the Richmond ABC office and it has been there since the end of April. Progress to getting the license had reviewed and, uh, approved has been slow, but I am assured we'll have it before the Freedom Food Festival in July. Uh, and of course it is now June, so I'm watching it carefully, but I don't have the, insights that they do in Richmond to tell me why it isn't being, uh, attended to quicker. Planning Commission, uh, excuse me, the Planning Development Department, uh, of course, they did help the planning commission get through the WNL Master Plan. Extensive work on that and their work is now finished, other than there may be some supporting issues here or opportunities here with city council as you work through that. Permit inspections and development activities have returned to more normal level. Uh, in two thousand and twenty-one, we had very exceptional level of, uh, activity, if you will. And this year, just for example, we have forty seven thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars collected so far in the calendar year for permits and fees as compared to one hundred and two thousand dollars in calendar year twenty-one. Also, the value of improvements at this point is just over seven million dollars and last year at this time was fifteen point seven million dollars. So activity has slowed here in Lexington from where it was last year, believe it or not. Few updates from the Fire Department, uh, effective July one. I'm happy to announce that Fire Marshal Trent Roberts will be promoted to the Deputy Fire and Rescue Chief. Officer Roberts will be accepting additional duties within the department in addition to continuing his current duties as Fire Marshal and Emergency Management Coordinator. And he will then, of course, fill in for the Chief, uh, Chief Dickerson when he is absent. Uh, during the WNL graduate graduation activities, the department was on standby, was also on standby during the fireworks display. Notices have been placed in the Advocate and News Gazette about the purchase of the ladder truck and inviting community to make a possible gift for the purchase, uh, due to the fine service the department continually renders. In addition, of course, there was a story on, uh, WSCT about this topic as well. And speaking of service, the department had to take a ladder to a second floor window for access to an apartment who, for a resident who locked themselves out. So another unusual, unusual way the Fire Department served our community recently. Also, just yesterday, Chief Dickerson responded to a fire in the county where Haybaler was fully involved. The chief was assisted by the, uh, Buena Vista Fire Department. The chief, uh, responded because we also had two EMS units responding to calls in Buena Vista at the time. So we had only one individual at the station. And it really, this is very instructive as an example of how vital cooperation is between our three communities when it comes to fire and rescue services. That we had two units in, uh, Buena Vista providing EMS service, had to respond to a fire call in, uh, Rockbridge County. And then were assisted by the Buena Vista Fire Department, which are two, they're two different entities in Buena Vista. Of course, they don't have one consolidated department. Nonetheless, though, we're moving in all different directions at the same time, it seems, and cooperation is very essential. Um, updates in the, uh, Police Department, I already mentioned earlier, I guess, was the promotions and I won't go through that again. Uh, but it was a great, uh, opportunity for, uh, a number of good officers in the Police Department to move upward in the leadership uh, of the department and in our community. Chief Green attended the Lexington Women's, uh, Club Spring Picnic and addressed the WNL class on Twenty First Century Policing. Staff from the department, assistant at the WNL undergraduate baccalaureate and commencement. And recent officer training, uh, in the department included active shooter training, crime prevention training and SWAT training. Unique opportunity in our community, uh, Aflac, the insurance company, um, is donating one hundred thousand dollars to the Rockbridge Area Health Center and, uh, to develop several youth support and wellness programs. In addition, Aflac has gifted a park bench to the city to be placed at Kids Place. And Mayor Friedman and Aflac officials will be present during the dedication at ten AM on June twenty ninth. So, uh, a rather large item of support and a smaller one that are both significant to the community. In Public Works, they've been busy, of course. Uh, the work at Morse Creek Dam has been completed and the height of the dam crest has been raised as per our safety management plan. Diamond Hill Water and Sewer Work continues, but sewer work has been slowed due to the inability to procure manholes of all things. At the same time, crews have been pounding through Rock and Peyton Street to install water main. Providence Hill work continues with thirty percent of the relining complete. This work also has been delayed and in this instance, due to shortage of crews. The preliminary work with, for the Jackson Water and Sewer Phase One has begun. City crews will be going door to door to identify the sewer outlets for homes in this area. We've learned with some of our previous work that where we anticipated things to be was not always the case. So we're going to ask residents to see if we can get any guidance or information from them. The West Nelson Street Bridge, uh, project, uh, renovation is being expedited. And the schedule now calls for the project to be advertised on June twentieth this month. Bids will be awarded August fourth. Construction begin August twenty ninth and is to be completed on February of twenty twenty-three. So very quick process, if it works out according to plans. We'll wait, we'll see if that happens, of course, but it's good news that they can expedite that and get that project that's very important to us, completed as soon as possible. Of course, during that time period, the Police Department, Public Works will be coordinating with the contractors to manage our traffic and other activities in the, uh, in the city while that construction is ongoing. As, uh, believe we all remember, we have a local, um, working group working on citing a new, Department of Social Services building. We've gone through, uh, a site selection process or review process with the, um, consultant we've hired. And we are now down to two different sites. We need to very quickly as a community or region get together and make a decision on which route to go on. That includes, of course, Lexington, Buena Vista, Rockbridge County, and of course, then the, um, entities that would be in the facility. So what we are proposing is the working group will be meeting, I believe, next week. And then asking the different entities to be involved. Government bodies primarily in a closed session, joint closed session to discuss the options available to us. Of course, we are looking at a real estate transaction or purchase or rental situation. And we don't want to do that publicly because we still have other sources or resources out there as far as, um, locations. So you will be hearing from the working group, you'll be hearing from me as to the possibility of a meeting in the latter half of this month. Um, we have to move quickly because the lease at the DSS facility will expire in two years. And then we'll be in a situation in all likelihood where, uh, it'll be a multiple year renewal. And we won't have any leverage. We need to get out of that lease or have an option available so we can get out of that lease before we find ourselves leasing again for several more years. Uh, at least that will be one of our goals as a, as a committee reporting back to you. So the other item I wanted to mention is that I am on vacation from the eleventh and returning on the twenty-second of this month. And that the leadership team will be, uh, handling things, uh, in the office and on the street. And, uh, if you need to contact somebody, uh, Jen will be the person to contact, but feel free to contact also the rest of our leadership team because obviously they're very accomplished in handling things on a day-to-day basis as they are now and they can go, uh, on for weeks without me, I'm sure. So, and that's all I have.
Weeks and months.
If need be.
Yeah. Any questions of the, uh, city manager? Mr. Allagood.
Thank you for your report. The project where the manholes are slow incoming. A while back, yeah, I was associated with a project and things for this project involve government money and the equipment had to be made, manufactured in the USA. Is that a requirement for this particular project?
It is not.
Alright, so they can come in.
They are trying to actually, um, fabricate the manholes themselves because they can't get the specific specified manholes they need. So they're working on that, the, um, contractors working on that, which isn't as hard as you think, but it does have some complications.
It doesn't happen overnight.
It does not. You're correct.
And nothing's easy. Mr. Smith.
I'm not a question, uh, to Jim. I'm going to get back to the Board of, uh, Equalization. Did, did Karen share with you how many, um, appeals for, um, of the assessment to be considered?
She did not, and nor did I ask. She said that, um, typically, uh, we would, uh, appoint, uh, effective July one and first appeals, you, there are a couple of steps before you get to the Board of Equalization and they would not likely meet until October. So, uh, uh, I, I know that she's had a few phone calls from concerned citizens that the numbers may be wrong on their tax statement. But, uh, yeah. Without a doubt. Uh, Jim, relative to your report with, um, the bridge replace or, uh, repairs. Do you anticipate that work, that traffic will be rerouted and the bridge will actually be closed for repairs?
Majority of the time, the bridge would remain open while it was under, uh, renovation. Okay. I, I could, I could not say that for some period of time, there might be some short closures, but it's supposed to be open the majority of the time. Cut down to one lane in many cases.
Uh, I hope that we have dollars in the budget to advertise and, uh, alert people through, uh, our media outlets that, uh, this will be going on for any disruption, um, and chaos that may ensue. And certainly it will, uh, disrupt the, um, trail for a period of time. So again, making sure our citizens are well informed of that.
One of the better tools we have, and I'll, uh, congratulate the chief on that, is we've got this, you know, automatic portable sign where we can warn people weeks in ahead of time that construction is coming. So we'll be obviously deploying that with other means as well.
Very good. Thank you. City attorney.
Two quick updates. Um, I had mentioned at a few meetings ago that RARo and the Board of Elections were working out a memorandum of understanding to sort of flesh out the agreement, um, that we really generalize as part of the purchase contract that's done. Um, I think everybody's satisfied, at least if not happy. Um, but I don't foresee any actual problems going forward with that, uh, working relationship. Um, secondly, the lease on the VDOT property for the school board, work, I'm working with Vicki Huffman. Um, I think Jim has been working with Spencer, um, to flesh that out. Our proposal is just simply to substitute in the city for VDOT and the lease. There's a provision that they can terminate, VDOT could have terminated with a ninety day notice, basically for any reason. And, and unless someone says differently, I've assumed that would be plenty for us, whatever we decide to, um, do with it. We will have more than ninety days, um, notice to, to let them clear out. Um, but we'll be bringing that forward, um, at some point later this summer.
Yeah, just for, uh, confirmation, I hope nods from council that our ambition is to support the County School Transportation Office in that location until we have someone to develop the property. And we would just assume the, the current lease and keep on trucking, let them take care of the children and their transportation needs. Very good. I'm not aware of any new business to come before us this evening. Um, and, um, I do want to, um, just alert if, uh, you're following ARB. Um, they were supposed to have a meeting this evening, I think at five, um, regarding new, uh, antennas to be put on the, uh, gin building. Um, the applicant, uh, called and, um, postponed that meeting. Um, but, uh, we haven't put in place any policies that, um, antennas have to be a pergola or a chimney or something that's not as, uh, sore thumbish, in my opinion, as the stealth antennas that are up there. So, um, um, we're still navigating that or I hope that we can, uh, at some point in time get, uh, some better parameters so we can keep our historic downtown looking historic and not like New York City, uh, stealth antennas. Um, so, uh, unless anybody has anything else for the good of the cause, we will stand adjourned and we beat ten o'clock at nine fifty-eight.